Okay. Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the NSU Art Museum City Commission meeting this March 5th, 2024. I hope you like our new digs. We'll be here for a while. And we're very thankful to the museum and to the to the school for working with us to provide this space for us. And hopefully, this will accommodate us for at least the near future. We have some interesting things happening in this afternoon's conference meeting. We're very excited about some of the discussions that we'll be having. So why don't we begin? Let me first state that Business One is going to be postponed to 2:45, date certain. We have a gentleman from the Miami Tunnel, Chris Hodgkins, who's coming here to speak and participate in that discussion. So we're we're going to continue that until 2:45. So we'll move on to Business Two. Does anyone have any objections to that? Are we okay with that?
2:45 today.
2:45 today.
Okay, good.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Business Two, Hemershi Revitalization Plan Presentation, Public Outreach Summary, and Next Steps. Mr. Chris Cooper.
Good afternoon, Mayor Commission. Chris Cooper, Director Development Services Department. It's nice to see you all today. So what we're going to present is an overview of a public outreach effort that really focuses on what the Hemershi Street corridor is today, some of the opportunities it presents, and what it could look like in the future. So we've heard from various stakeholders, you know, for some time along Hemershi Street that it's time to re-envision the corridor and take advantage of the amenities as well as some of the proposed development that that's taking place in the future nearby. As an initial step, we conducted a robust stakeholder outreach effort to understand individual interests as well as identify areas of consensus. And today, we're going to present that information to you. So I'm going to introduce Fabian De La Esprilla, who is our consultant that we brought on to spearhead and coordinate the effort.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Fabian De La Esprilla. I am founding principal with Urbe Studio. It's a small community planning firm out of Miami. Like Chris said, we want to report back on these outreach efforts that we've advanced over these last few months around the Hemershi area. So the overall intent of this initiative was to conduct some outreach, to incorporate some public input into the early planning phase of this revitalization plan, learn about stakeholders' concerns and priorities for the area, identify opportunities to enhance and revitalize the area, and obtain input about desired next steps. And so our our timeline in terms of milestones, we we really had stakeholder one-on-one discussions that started back in October 2023. We hosted an open house event in November. And then we started a documentation of the process and findings. And we presented a draft report to the to staff for review and comment in January. And we wrapped up that process. And we're here reporting back on on our findings. So in terms of the engagement process, we just wanted to note that we we hosted stakeholder engagement through one-on-one discussions. We had a splash page connected linked to the city's website, which had a digital comment map. And we also had an open house event where we wanted to obtain that input from from residents and business owners. And so the the open house event was held on Monday, November 13th. We really did a communications strategy. We worked with the communications department. And we advertised on the city's website, Facebook, Nextdoor, LinkedIn, Instagram, all the channels. And we had about 47 individuals showed up. It was a very successful turnout. And we were happy to hear a lot of the input and observations folks had. These are some of the images from from the event last November. So in terms of what we heard, we wanted to to share some of the insights that that we received through the conversations with stakeholders. And the the takeaway is that there were some themes that were common through these conversations, reflecting an understanding of the challenges and opportunities in the area. And we wanted to go through all of this with you. So there's a sentiment about restoring identity for the area. They want to ensure safe and an active place. They want to provide management and oversight. They want to balance economic goals and community needs. They want to address infrastructure challenges, develop an action plan, advocate for greater mix of uses beyond the bar scene that is currently there, enhance walkability and place-making, address regulatory framework for entertainment district, promote compatible development to protect community character, improve circulation, leverage the proximity to new developments and Brightline, promote a business-friendly mindset, provide capital investments in Esplanade Park, and promote a long-term sustainable strategy for the lasting of the district. And so based on on the outreach completed, the following long-term goals were suggested for prioritization. To develop a comprehensive and data-driven existing conditions analysis. To identify best practice models for special district governance and management structure. Develop streetscape design concept alternatives for Second Street. Identify opportunities to enhance and revitalize the area through updates to the existing code. Conduct a market analysis to identify opportunities for desired and expanded uses within the area and develop a public realm strategy for improvements. So with that, we want to open up for some questions or discussion.
Okay. Commissioner Glasson, you participated in this outreach program. You want you have any comments on this?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, and thank you to the team. Thank you to DSD. Yes, as you probably remember, not this recent January, but the January before, we actually identified the Hemershi Entertainment District as a priority of ours. Many folks remember what this area was at one time and why it is so important that we get it back. We have to take control over this area. It's gotten out of hand. And I'm so happy that we've actually taken these steps since we identified this as a commission goal last year. I have been meeting with a lot of the stakeholders in addition to the meetings that we've seen today discussed as part of this process for the revitalization plan.
Hold, can you hold on a second? There's tremendous feedback on these microphones. Is there anything that we can do to adjust that? Okay. All right. I'm sorry.
No, no problem. So basically, I'm very encouraged by what I see. And and we have to make sure that this is one of those plans that gets from the paper to actual reality. I want to add a few things that I think I've been hearing also lately, ever since this plan was published for the backup and public had a chance to take a look at it. Because I think there are things that we need to do. And I think we need to keep moving forward. Because again, with all of the plans that we've seen coming along, not just the Hemershi District, but also surrounding it on West Broward Boulevard as a gateway to the downtown area, it's really crucial that we that we clean this area up. It cannot just be a midnight to 4:00 AM party place and where the streets just don't even recover during the day and there's no one there during the day. This has to be an active district. It has to be active. It has to be connected to what we've already seen discussed in terms of MODs, in terms of Riverwalk, in terms of the Broward Center for the Performing Arts, and even as a connection to the Sailboat and Historic District. It's all connected here. And we have to make sure that it really works for everybody. That being said, as we see all of these plans coming forward for the area, we do really need to focus on parking. Many of the empty lots will eventually be taken by development. We have to make sure that there is a way that we can incorporate parking for the patrons of this district in some of these structures that are going to come. I don't know whether that's going to be a floor or two or how that's going to look. But we have to make sure that that is available for folks as we see development come along. We have to make sure that people feel safe. You know, I had some things suggested to me, and I've had this conversation with the city manager as well. Back in the day, we did try at one time an ambassador program, and I liked it. I think that because of this being an entertainment district in downtown and many of our cultural institutions, you could actually even start with this facility and go all the way to the Broward Center for the Performing Arts. Folks need to feel safe. And they need to feel that there are people there to guide them and to help them find their destination. And I think that in my conversations with the city manager, I'd like to see us maybe look at that again, some sort of branded ambassador program where these folks can be easily identifiable. They can help the public. They can help our visitors. They can perhaps have things with them like, you know, radios and be connected to our first responders. I think that's really, really important going forward so that people feel that sense of safety in that area. Some people have also suggested that maybe we look at some of the hours again. How does the district feel? How do the neighbors feel about the 4:00 AM stop time? Is that something that we we need to look at? I also hear that we have to do more in terms of really making sure that this is an attractive area and that it's clean and that people feel a sense of place here. At one time, we also had a zoning where there were certain limits in terms of feet when one permit could be how far away from another structure. In other words, I think it was you couldn't have an alcohol permit within 100 feet of another alcohol permit. So there's just, these are some of the, you know, the weeds that we might get into. But I wanted to just mention them for the record because it's really, really important that we restore this area to what it once was. And there are things that we can do. We can do street improvements. We can do streetscape improvements. We can look at sidewalks. We can do it, look at landscape upgrades. We can do all of these things. And at the same time, make sure that all of the businesses there feel that we're out to help them. Many times, I hear from some of the establishments that, oh, my gosh, if they have a chair that's out of line or there's something that's just not, you know, if it's a planter of some sort and it wasn't approved, you know, they get slapped for that. I just think that we need to reach out more to the businesses that are there. We need to encourage other types of businesses. This in conjunction with all of the things that I've mentioned and all of the things that we see that are outlined in the backup of these 38 pages. Again, I wanted to thank you for this plan. I think it is a good blueprint. I just think we have to get into a little bit more details as time goes on. But I think it's a great start. And I'm really happy to see this get fleshed out from the time that we first talked about this as a commission in January of 2023. Thanks, Mayor.
Okay. Can I ask you a question? So what motivated the need for this study? You mentioned safety in your in your remarks at least a half a dozen times. Have we considered this an unsafe area? I know that it has gotten very bar-oriented, but what is the what has been the driving force to try to make changes here? I mean, is it broken? What are we trying to fix?
Well, I think it is. I think it is broken, actually. I mean, as I mentioned earlier, if you do go back, you know, 10 years or so, and you remember what this was, this was this was a corridor that was active during the day. People would be there. People would have lunch there. People would walk around there. Even people would use that area for a matinee at the theater or to go to the museum or to go to this museum or even MODs. It was a sort of a central place in between the bookends of this museum and the Broward Center for the Performing Arts. It was a very active street. That is no longer the case. And because of the fact that it has deteriorated over time, you do see people say, well, it's just not attractive. It's not clean. They don't feel safe. You know, we hear a lot of reports about activity that we're not thrilled about, even near the bus station, Brightline Station. All of this needs to be, it needs to be cleaned up. I still hear from people when they take Brightline and then they come into this area, they they wonder why it looks the way it looks. I just think that we need to do so much more to make sure that this is an attractive and engaging area. Again, if we are really serious about getting people moving on the rails and when they get off at the station, what are they looking at? How are they connecting to the Arts and Entertainment District? And do they even want to connect to the Arts and Entertainment District if it's not appealing? So I just think it really needs, Mayor, a total overhaul. That's why I did bring this up for the last year's goal-setting workshop. That's why I think we're at the point in time now. And then in conjunction with, as I mentioned earlier, there is a lot of development coming to this corridor. There I've seen projects that are coming even on Hemershi Street and and adjacent. That coupled with all of the development that we're seeing proposed and approved on Broward Boulevard, this is just a really crucial corridor. I think we have to focus a lot more attention than we have. It is, I think, almost like a frontier for us. It's a transition area that I think we really have to make sure is everything that it possibly can be.
Okay. Yes, ma'am. Vice Mayor.
I'm excited about this opportunity because when my colleague brought it and shared the the goals and ideas of what he wanted to see, or what really the city, the community wants to see in this area, embracing that because I do believe that this is also, I don't want to use the word pilot, but a beginning point for not only in District Two, but in Three, One, and Four, we all have areas that that need this type of revitalization, excuse me. But what I'm I'm excited about is the step one, to see what's going to happen next, and then watch this grow throughout the whole city. Because we we want, in every area of our city, we want our neighbors, our visitors, everyone to come to feel and experience the best of the city. So I'm excited to see how this is gonna, the direction it's going to go in. And then next in line, in District Three, to see where, how we can do something similar and what also is needed in District Three as well. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. We have Ted and Sarah signed up to speak. Ted?
Push that button right at the bottom.
Hello, my name is Ted and Sarah, President of the River Oaks Civic Association. Now, I have a long history with the Hemershi District. I've worked decades and decades down there, from the Bonton Square to the Lang Yip Cajun House with Ron Morrison, over to when the restaurant people just came in with the Hemershi Bar and Grill and then Tarpon River, Tarpon Bend, and then over to the the House on the River. And, you know, the one thing that I see, though, that was first on your list was restore identity. Restoring that identity does not mean turning into Flagler Village. That seems like all we want to do anymore is monochrome the entire city, make everything look like Northeast Third Avenue, make everything look like Flagler Village, even to the point where you're discussing with the Los Olas Boulevard, trying to turn that into Northeast Third Avenue by by taking out the trees. There's nothing wrong with the live music, late-night venue area in a city. Every major city has that. I mean, there's, you know, not everywhere is going to be on Los Olas Boulevard, swanky restaurants, you know? Some people want to go hear some live music and have some fun. Now, it does need some cleaning up. There is some improvements that can be made. But I just don't think just making it, you know, Flagler Village all around. I mean, I just lost my job down there, 13 years at the Ovi House that closed. And along with the 20 people that were working in there and right on Second Street. But, you know.
Do you think that they closed because the character of the neighborhood had been changing?
Oh, no, I, because the guy loves the revitalization idea. And he's going in that area. That's that's going to change, like Commissioner said, with a lot of different developments coming in there, a lot of different plans. That was just choice, choice property. When I hear you guys, I don't mean to harp on this, say the word revitalization or reimaging, to me, you might as well just say, tear it all down and make it Flagler Village. That's basically, that's the translation that I got. And, you know, Flagler Village is nice. It's beautiful. They have a lot of great murals there, unlike River Oaks, where we get in trouble when we put murals there. But so I just read, it just says again, restore the identity. Late-night plays, bars, live music, that's not such a bad thing. Clean up the the bus terminal, yes, do all that over there. But that's, that can't reflect on Second Street. There's, it's happening to, that's a good spot, you know? Just, just keep it the way it is, clean it up a little bit. Late-night bar, live music place is a good thing.
Okay. All right. Very good.
Mayor, I just wanted to just one thing to just to allay some fear here.
Yes, sir.
So Ted, the, realize that this is also a historic district.
Oh, yes.
So I would never be in favor of just demolishing everything and making it like you say, Flagler Village. I think that we have to find some flexibility perhaps, but this is a historic district, and that's important, I believe, for the city. So I I don't want to ever see it to the point where it's level. But you can have all of those things that you're saying, but also, it doesn't have to be necessarily dirty or seedy or unsafe. You can have all of that.
Like the building where the Ovi House is, it was built in 1925. And so, yeah, there, there is a lot of great things along that area. And but but, you know, let's, let's keep some of the charm. Let's, let's keep their identity and, you know, and go from there. Thank you.
No argument. Thank you. Gina Ellis and then Joe Cox? Gina, if you could just push that button at the bottom of the microphone. Yeah.
Got it. Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, City Attorney, City Clerk. I didn't think I missed anyone. So we are very interested in seeing the revitalization in that district. Yes, it's historic, and it should remain that character. The Entertainment District that's there was put there to revitalize the district years ago. It was blighted. It was unsafe. Through that time, we've now have Museum of Discovery and Science. We have the Broward Center. We have beautiful parks in the area. But what has happened in the district is restaurants are gone. All we have are bars. Nothing wrong with a bar, Ted, I promise. They just don't all have to be bars. One of the things in our discussion group that we've seen and talked about is how do we keep the character of the Entertainment District with the late-night activities but offer earlier activities as well? And that's where the dining comes in. So perhaps looking at the special entertainment oversight, how it's laid out, what the terms and conditions are, are things that can be done that change those characters. Commissioner, you actually mentioned the distancing for alcohol. So maybe that's a consideration that you look at. Maybe open containers on the street go away. Doesn't take away the 4:00 AM. It just says you don't stroll from bar to bar. We all struggle with the noise. Trust me, we do. Trust me, we do. So perhaps to address noise at some point during the evening, doors close on the street. So there are ways to keep its current charm and character, add new things to the district, but the most important piece right now is people feel unsafe there. They visit Broward Center and the Museum of Discovery and Science, and I guess Joe is going to speak behind me, so he'll speak to it even more. The perception is it's unsafe, and perhaps it is a perception in the early evening. I can't speak for the late evening, I'm not out at 4:00 a.m., but there are those that are, which is fine. Ambassador program would be fantastic. Presence in those areas make people feel comfortable. As these new buildings come online, and they will come online, there will be a loss of surface parking. Where are we going to park them? Well, we're going to encourage them to use, you know, the county garage, and AutoNation, and, as you said, maybe some of the newer buildings will put public parking in. But people need to walk to those locations, so making them feel safe will be a benefit. So the Ambassador Program coming back would be a bonus. So it's my hope that as you move forward, that you'll look at some of these as short-term goals, as opposed to long-term goals. Oops, tons of...
Go ahead, go ahead.
So that we can make that start today. Thank you.
Jeanne, I have a question for you. Do you remember when, I don't know what happened exactly, but at one point in time, all of the businesses and the owners, there was like a board there, a management board almost, so that really people had buy-in in the Hemershy District? And there was a little bit more of a self-control, they were a little bit more, you know, self-policed. What happened to that board?
So that structure was actually a two-part structure. The businesses had the Downtown Hemershy Village Association, which was the operators and owners, but the district was managed through a contract, I believe, with the city. So there was a little separation there. To put those two things together candidly probably would solve a lot of your issues in the area, with one management, one set of guidelines, things that would benefit the entire district.
So over time, that group, that board, just sort of fell apart?
It did, and I believe that at one point, the individual who had oversight of the district, the special entertainment license, passed away, and at that juncture, it lost all momentum.
Okay, well, Mayor, that's maybe something we can also visit as a city, reactivating that kind of a group where they really did have a say, because they were the stakeholders, and that was their street, and at the time, they did have that kind of buy-in. It was, I think, really great, but maybe we need to get that back.
And also, you would need to put some restrictions there, or some expectations, so that when they perform, they have a standard to perform to.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Joe Cox?
Afternoon, everyone. Thank you so much for the conversation. Joe Cox, President and CEO of the Museum of Discovery and Science, and I want to thank Commissioner Glassman, because we first approached you kind of on this as a cohort last year. We, at the museum, last year saw 428,000 visitors through the museum. They came from every community in the county, they came from every state in the country. We even got North Dakota. So we had every state represented. They're coming into the museum in huge numbers. In August, we opened a brand-new $6 million early childhood gallery. Since August, our attendance is 21% ahead of last year. So we're on track to welcome half a million visitors to the Hemershy District this year. We would love, when those visitors come into downtown, that they then go explore the rest of the district. We're standing in the NSU Art Museum, a five-minute walkaway, History Fort Lauderdale, the River Walk, which anchors the whole thing, but they need to know how to get there. I love the idea of wayfinding, I love the idea of the ambassadors. We're certainly not opposed to late nights, because we're open till 1:00 with our IMAX Theater. But what we'd love to see is a richer, more diverse fabric, more family-friendly restaurants, you know, some shops, so that when our family visitors come in, they spend time, and they spend money in downtown Fort Lauderdale. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do you feel that, just a second, the folks that come to visit the museum, is there a sense of, do they not feel safe when they come there?
They, during the day, they're just unsure about where to go, because during the day, Second Street looks dead, there's really nothing...
Nothing's open, right.
Yeah, nothing's open, so they want to know where we go, so we try to guide them to History Fort Lauderdale, our front desk knows what's happening at the art museum, but there's no signage, there's no wayfinding, you know, it just looks like an abandoned part of town. And I think, as, you know, was mentioned as well, a lot of our visitors are young families with strollers, so streetscaping, sidewalk rejuvenation would really help people get around and move around more easily, and we are worried about parking. You know, a couple of weeks ago, it rained on a Sunday, and we love it when it rains at the museum, because we had 3,500 visitors on that Sunday, but it was the same time as a matinee performance at the Broward Center. There was no parking in the whole district, so once we get these new buildings going in, there's going to be a real economic impact on us, the Broward Center, anyone down there if we're not tackling. So, safety, I think, is certainly, people are cautious, and then in the evenings, people leaving the IMAX Theater, it can get pretty raucous on Second Street.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak on this? Anyone on the Commission have any questions or comments?
Well, as we, no, as we develop Brightline, and the ridership goes up, and commuter rails coming down the pike, this is right at our doorstep there, and I think it is good to welcome people. It's a draw, so people that come to Fort Lauderdale will have access through rail now, and I think it's very vital to welcome people that are coming into our community.
Okay. So what are next steps? What are next steps?
I would ask Chris what his next steps are.
So, we had some next steps in the slide, but I think primarily it's to develop that action plan. I think we've gotten a lot of great feedback, both today and through the stakeholder input. We really had a lot of folks participate, as you just heard from a few today, but there were really several that are engaged in that community that gave us some really good feedback, which was very consistent with what you heard today. So, next step, put together that action plan, we'll kind of look at those short-term goals, maybe midterm and long-term goals, try to get some early accomplishments on some of those short-term goals, to really show that we're making improvements in the area, and then come back to you in the event that we need to look at any sort of funding, or sort of long-term direction on some of those bigger, bigger goals that we mentioned.
Okay. Do you have any closing comments?
No, again, I just want to say thank you to everyone, our consultant team, staff. Again, I'm very, very excited that we actually have taken this from just a goal, and now we have a plan, and we have our next steps. We have engaged the community, I did attend all of those sessions, and I think we're heading in the right direction. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on to Business Three, let's talk about something even more exciting, infiltration and inflow program update. Mr. Dodd.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. About two months ago, we awarded a contract for inflow and infiltration services. This is to help us to maintain and preserve the capacity that we have in the GTL wastewater treatment plant. It's key to our ability to provide services, and to be able to grow and, you know, take care of our residents. So the presentation we're giving is with our consultant, Adura Group, that will be performing the work under the INI program, and I'm going to turn it over to Paola Davalos, please tell me if I said it right, who will give the presentation, and then we'll answer any questions you may have.
Very good, thank you.
Okay, good afternoon. My name is Paola Davalos, I represent Adura Group, Inc. Very happy to be here. Adura is a general civil engineering firm based out of Miami-Dade County. So I'm excited to talk to you about infiltration and inflow. We're going to talk a little bit about the program, what are our overall goals, why are we doing this, also about the existing and proposed funding to fund this program, and our general work plan, and then move into questions. So, in a nutshell, infiltration or inflow, or also called INI, is basically water that should not be in the sewer system, either from rain or from groundwater. When we're talking about infiltration, that's typically groundwater entering the sewer system through defects, and we're talking about inflow, it's typically rainwater, which enters the system and should not be there. Basically, we're conveying, pumping, and treating clean water that should not be in the system, and this is a very common occurrence in, all over the country, and everywhere, in the sewer system, with aging sewer system, this is a consequence. So, I am really passionate about this subject, and about reducing infiltration and inflow because of the impact that it has on communities, on all of these realms, operationally, to reduce O and M burdens. Economically, it is an investment that really gives you back your return on your investment very quickly, in the form of reducing this flow that should not be in your system, and it also has great environmental impacts to reduce any overflows or any unwanted sewage spills. So, the city selected Adura Group, Inc. to provide program management and consultant services to implement and manage this citywide inflow and infiltration reduction program. The reason that we were selected is firstly, we are proven INI reduction experts, we've done similar programs such as this in many different cities in South Florida, including Miami-Dade Water and Sewer Department, City of Coral Gables, North Bay Village, City of North Miami, and among many others. We're recognized for results and cost savings, so this is pretty much a performance-based contract, where again, we're maximizing your investment and returning that in quantitative form. You have a fully committed program manager, I'll be the program manager serving this contract, and we're backed by great technical expertise and depth of resources, as well as great subconsultants that will allow us to do all of the work that's needed under this program. And finally, we have a really knowledgeable public outreach team, which is very critical for this program. So our strategic INI reduction program is pretty much summarized on this slide that you have in front of you. We are providing a comprehensive and phased plan. We start with collecting data in the field to identify and pinpoint where the sources are for this water entering the system. Again, we have a very robust public education and outreach strategy to make sure that the community is informed, knowledgeable, aware, and understands what we're doing throughout the entire city. We're very, we're very big on quality, everything that we do, it's one of our core values, so we'll have a very strategic and quality control and quality assurance protocols throughout the whole program. We'll also assist the city in identifying new funding opportunities, so that you can maximize your investment into these rehabilitation and construction of the defects. And we'll also assist in policy adoption, for example, revising your policies for large user agreements, or implementing policies for INI coming from the private side. So, as we go along, we're going to be quantifying these actual savings, so that we can show you metrics, and this will all be managed through dashboards, so that we can create transparency, accountability, and visualization, as well as centralization of all this amount of data that we're going to be collecting. In a nutshell, our number-one objective for this program is to reduce the flows into the treatment plants, and thus prevent expansion of the treatment plant in an already constrained site, and this has additional benefits that go along with, you know, reducing this extra So here is the overall kind of work plan of what we're going to be doing. We're going to start with this data collection, both desktop and in the field, do some flow monitoring to understand how much flow is going into each of your basins. We'll provide sanitary sewer evaluation survey services, which I'll discuss a little bit more in the next slide, and then go into providing a cost-effective corrective action plan, including data management and advanced analytics. Again, we're going to help with those policies to be able to tackle more INI than just what's in your system, but also that INI coming from large users and from the private side. And then ultimately, the main goal is to reduce this water, to reduce this flow into the system. So we'll start with INI source detection, and go all the way through, really monitoring after the repairs, to make sure that we actually did what we're saying that we're going to do. So when it comes to this SSES, or sanitary sewer evaluation survey, some of the things that we're going to be doing is first, night flow assessments. So we'll be evaluating the flow into the sewer system between the hours of 1:00 a.m. to 5:00 a.m., where typically the wastewater flow should not be that high in the domestic normal activities, so this is flow that's generally considered infiltration and inflow. Then we're going to be doing night flow isolation, where we're pretty much plugging the individual gravity main segments, to be able to really pinpoint where the problems are, and this is going to reduce the amount of TV that's done throughout the basins. As we go along, we're going to also inspect all your manholes, that's also a very key point where water can go into the system, and we'll be doing smoke testing, which is putting non-toxic smoke into the sewer system to see where it comes out of, which usually shows where defects are. I'm sorry that some of these things are a little bit technical, I don't want to bore you guys, but basically on the prioritization, there's many different factors, both qualitative and quantitative, that we consider when we're prioritizing the type of work and the projects, but these are main four things that we're going to focus on. Number one is the low-hanging fruit. Where are the sources that are going to give us the early winds, the biggest reduction in flow? Second of all, reducing the flow from peak rain events. Thirdly, we distinguish between the base INI that comes through the groundwater throughout the entire year, from the one that comes from the rain, and also that is influenced by the tides. Each of them has a different approach on how to tackle. And finally, obviously, you know, focusing on areas where we want to reduce potential sanitary sewer overflows, which are a hazard to the environment and public health. When it comes to funding, there is already an amendment that was approved in February 6th for about $23 million for this program. There is also an adopted budget for 2024 for an additional $3.7 million for the construction and work for some ongoing projects you have, and then on the bottom, you see the plan for the fiscal years 2025 through 2029, and the funding that is currently allocated for each of those years. So, as far as our overall work plan, it's going to be divided into three phases, so we can continuously, you know, move forward with this, and really get, you know, the program at a good pace. The first year, we're going to focus on 10 critical basins, and then we're going to sequence the rest of the basins into Priority Two and Priority Three, and that's pretty much our phase approach. We assess the priority basin, we rank and prioritize the defects, and then we do the rehab and the post-rehab monitoring. And that's it. Thank you very much.
Great. Does anyone have any questions?
A few, if I can.
Yes, go right ahead.
Well, first of all, thank you very much.
You're the engineer, you're the engineer up here.
Well, thank you. Thank you for the presentation, Colonel Dodd, thank you very much for the work that you guys do. Just know, we know, but just for the audience, the difference between inflow and infiltration, infiltration obviously is a break in the crack, or a leak at a joint or something, and inflow is coming through, that's coming through that's not supposed to be there, correct? Right.
Right, so infiltration is typically cracked, so it lets the groundwater come in, and then inflow could be some kind of direct connection of rainfall into the system, so that's the general distinguishing factor between the two.
And I think you mentioned this earlier, the big issue that we have is that we have the water treatment plant that has a capacity, a physical capacity as well as capacity that's set by regulation, and it would be nice if we just treated sewer water, and this is water that doesn't need to be treated, that's getting in, that's adding to the cost and capacity. Give me an idea of the inflow and infiltration, which is worse, and by what magnitude, like, do you have a feel for what's the bigger problem, or do they, historically?
So, it's, they're both have different impacts. So, for example, infiltration, it's easier to remove from the system, and you're going to have a consistent reduction, month after month. When it comes to that inflow, or that rain-dependent infiltration inflow, those peaks, that also creates a huge impact to your treatment plan, because you don't have enough capacity for those peak events, and that's where you go kind of out of compliance with the limits established for the treatment plan. So they both have, you know, different impacts, and it's also much more challenging to address those peaks. But I would say that you guys... But I would say that you guys, that that the city has both, an issue with both of those things.
And I would imagine, but I mean, is like 70% of the problem by infiltration? Or is inflow a bigger part of it? It would seem that the infiltration would be the bigger of the two problems volume-wise or?
Yeah, exactly, like volume and consistency-wise, as well as cost-saving-wise. That's the biggest impact. But again, we also, by tackling that, you're also going to be tackling those peaks to prevent that, you know, from being overcapacity in those in those peak events.
And the other question for the inflow part of it, I mean, I would imagine those, that's water that's coming through actual, not breaks, but pipes are there that shouldn't be flowing. Is that mainly manholes that are not sealed correctly?
That could be one source.
Okay, right. And with kink tides, that would affect the infiltration more or the the inflow more or both?
Both, both, because when when the kink tides, you know, what we see is you typically have a a diurnal hydrograph where you have a peak in the morning when everybody is using, you know, the restroom and and their water supply. Then it goes down, everybody's going to work. Then you have another peak during the afternoon, and then it goes down again during the night. That's our typical diurnal hydrograph. When you look at a tightly influenced basin, basically that's normal pattern gets lost within the high tides. And it really matches the high tides, you know, and it gets pushed back every day by one hour. It really matches one-to-one. So you're losing the normal wastewater flow patterns because of the abundance of tidal water coming into the system.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Anyone else have any questions? I have a couple of questions. Going back to page 11 on the funding aspect. So we see a significant amount of money being programmed for fiscal years 2025 to 2029. So in your estimation, what percentage of the inflow and infiltration problem will be addressed with that kind of funding? What is your expectation?
That's a really great question. So I think we had done some kind of preliminary analysis. So I don't want to, you know, say anything permanent until we actually get started and working on more of the details. But I would say around hopefully 25 to 30% of the total INI going into the system can be tackled with the amount of funding that you currently have.
So?
Which is typical. So the the way that it works with INI is you, the the normal amount that is achievable to reduce from 100% of infiltration inflow that you have is right around 30%. So we're confident that we can achieve that with the current funding. However, the more amount of INI that you want to remove, the more funding that needs to be placed into the program to achieve higher levels of reduction.
Right. So you really can't come up with a percentage then of like, we're going to, we're going to address it 100% by 2029. You don't know yet.
Right, right. So 100% is very unlikely in any scenario, even with all the funding in the world.
So we're not at 100%. So are we at 50%?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Like right now, I can tell you like our goal is at least 30% as start as we start. Like we're just getting, you know, started. This is our first, you know, meeting to present what our plan is. But as we go through it, we'll be able to provide you better estimates. And that's one of the goals that we have is to provide that quantification in those estimates.
The reason why I ask is because is this, is this enough money to be able to address the problem? Because the the sewage treatment plant is a vital aspect of the functioning of the city. We not only, we not only service our own city, but we service other cities. And considering the amount of growth that we are anticipating, you know, we need to be able to plan. So I'm just wondering, are we, are we supplying sufficient funds to be able to address the need?
Right.
Or are we in a situation where we don't know what we don't know yet?
So one thing that I can note, for example, is that the funding available for 2025 is significantly lower than for the future years. And we want to ramp up the program really quickly. So that's the one thing that kind of, you know, might be a little bit low at this point that we would want to make sure that we have as much as possible to really focus on the rehabilitation side of things to get that, you know, significant reduction as we go through the program. So I would say that in general, again, I can get back to you with the specific numbers, but I do think that there is more funding needs for the program. And we are going to be able to help to identify additional funding and grants and things like that that can be applied for.
Okay. All right. Anyone else have any questions? There being none, thank you so much. We appreciate it. Okay, moving on to business four. This is Fort Lauderdale Police Department School Zone Speed Camera Presentation. Who will be making that presentation? Chief Schultz. Why aren't you on the beach protecting us from all those spring breakers that we're being attacked? Are attacking our city?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioner.
Safer crowd than being in here, I would imagine.
Right, right? Good afternoon. We were asked in conjunction with Transportation and Mobility to put together a very brief presentation on what's now available in the state of Florida. Legislation has been passed that now allows private companies to partner with cities and counties to install automated speed detection systems. Of course, if we did that, it would be much like our past red light camera. We would have to pass an ordinance. The enforcement would be restricted 30 minutes before, after, and they could do during the school session times. We'd enter into an agreement with the school board. Locations would of course have advanced signage and ample signage reference the process. We would be responsible for citation issuance, adjudication and coordinating the courtroom with the traffic magistrates. And of course, there would be an annual report on the process. As you can see, this is not moving forward for you, is it? Are the slides moving for you?
I T.
Thank you, sir. Okay. So we'll go down to the second. Okay, so the statute does limit how much would be charged. It would be $100 maximum. You can see $40 automatically goes to the various state line items there. The remainder would come to the city. And then we would partner with a third-party vendor. And that's approximately $20 per citation. But that would be worked out in an RFP process. And then again, we would be responsible for the programming, staffing and notifications. These are just four schools that we suggested to start. Of course, that could be renegotiated. We would want to conduct a traffic study, though. In any location that we're going to look at, we would want to know exactly what prior to any installation, the traffic study would tell us, the speed, average speed, average number of vehicles and such that pass through those areas during the school times. And this would not be for this school year, it would be for the the coming school year. And like I mentioned, we would need a third-party vendor. And we discussed the staffing allocation, I'm sorry, the funding allocations. We would have to hire at least two staff. Those would be the individuals who would administer the program and review all the citations and take the citations to court if needed. Postage and equipment for the citations, the traffic study, as I mentioned. And then the unknowns would be determined after we pick a company to partner with. The office space would be provided by the police department. And then, of course, we would have to deal with affidavits of drivers who claim that they were not operating their vehicle at the time of the violation. And then we would work with a traffic magistrate for prosecution. And then, as I mentioned, we'd be responsible for the processing and bookkeeping of the program. And with that, that concludes our slides. Are there any questions?
I have a question. Back to slide three, page three, rather. It it shows the allocation of funds on a typical $100 citation. So where is the administrative costs coming in here? Who's absorbing that, like at the court, the courts or just through the administrative process? I don't see that taking?
There may, yeah, there's likely going to be costs to us from the clerk of courts, just as there is for our community court program.
So we we would absorb that?
Yeah, it would be part of the $60 portion there.
And 20 of that goes to our vendor? And if the administrative cost is more than $40, we have to eat that?
Right, yeah. So this would be a program that would be service-oriented, hopefully cost-neutral. But there certainly is a possibility that we would have to fund.
Okay. Any questions, Commissioner?
Yeah, so just along those lines, though, right? Currently, how many of our motor unit personnel do we have deployed at schools that are doing speed enforcement mornings and afternoons?
It would be primarily our motorcycle unit. And they have assigned schools, but they rotate because we don't have enough to do every school.
Right. So I think, and the reason I bring that up, Mayor, is I think in the long run, we will have to have somebody obviously review the the camera footage. I don't know if that's a full-time or a part-time position. But I think it will free up other personnel. The nice thing about this is it's a it's a force multiplier. We can cover every school that needs it without having to deploy personnel that we might be able then to turn around and put in other places around the city. So I love this concept. When I first heard about it, I've met with a number of different vendors, many of whom were invited to be here today. I've talked with the city manager and the chief about this. And I I think this is an absolutely phenomenal idea. It's a great way to keep our children safe at relatively low cost to the city and to really encourage people to slow down when they're driving through our our school areas. You know, we've got a lot of kids out there that are exposed as they're walking downs. We've got neighborhoods that still don't have sidewalks around our schools. I know in my old neighborhood in Vic Park, when I lived there, I had children walking down the streets. Because we don't have sidewalks in many areas of Vic Park. That's also true of some of my areas in in my current district. So I think this is very important, and I I really think we should move forward with this. And I and I appreciate the legislature recognizing that because you may all remember years ago when we first introduced the red light camera concept, the legislature fought it tooth and nail for years before they finally saw the value in in using technology in place of personnel out there. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Oh, yeah. Chief, thank you very much for for visiting us today. Like with the red light camera, the issue, we had discussed this earlier too. But for red light camera, the issue comes over, you know, with you're not physically there pulling over a driver, verifying the license. So the question is, how do they verify who's driving the car? And is it, is it a moving violation with with points and everything? Or is it a, an assessment on the owner of the vehicle? How would you do that?
The first citation would not be a moving citation. It would be a per our ordinance. And there is an affidavit that the owner of the car, the registered owner is the one who's going to receive the citation. They can fill that affidavit out and say that it was not them. It was instead this person, and then that person would receive that charge.
Do they get points also, or is it just a fee?
There's only points assessed if it goes into a traffic site, a state traffic citation. And that would happen if they refuse to pay the citation.
Okay, thank you very much.
Welcome. Vice Mayor.
Yes, I have a question. Good afternoon, Chief.
Good afternoon.
In my pre-agenda meeting last night, a question did arise regarding the manpower versus going into this type of opportunity. And knowing that we are understaffed and this would help us to address those speeders in our school zones. But the question is being asked, how many additional officers would be needed to service this without the pilot program? How many more would be needed?
So if we did not do this program at all?
Right, if we didn't do this program.
Well, this would be?
How many officers would be needed?
So for instance, we listed four schools in this presentation. Normally, there would be two officers per school.
Okay. So even to the district-wide, I mean, the citywide, because this is, the goal is to eventually go citywide.
Right.
So with all the school zones?
Well, and I don't know that it would be completely citywide because there are some schools that are on slower streets just by nature. We're looking at schools with two, two lanes in each direction. Something like that is where we would be looking for something like this. But if you wanted to do every, every school every day, that would be a lot of, about probably about 40 officers.
I needed that question to take back. I'm looking forward to this pilot to see how it will come back, the speeders and slow, just give some, some slowness to the school zone. So thank you for the presentation.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Mayor, I do, just one. Chief, thank you for the work on this. Just a question. Is it typical in municipalities where this is happening that school boards actually get involved and shoulder some of the responsibility or the costs or involved in any way, except them just getting a cut of the money?
I'm not sure if it is nationally. This is going to be relatively new for Florida. I know there's contracts being entered into in the South Florida area, but I'm not aware of anyone that's currently doing it in Broward. So I would have to research that with the, the companies are national, so I could research that for you.
Because if we go back, and maybe we can go back to that slide that shows the breakdown of the $100.
You're asking, why are they getting a cut when they're not doing anything?
Exactly. Thank you for, yes, thank you for?
I'm just trying to bring it down.
Well, I am trying to be, I'm trying to be?
Page three of five.
Thank you. If we, yeah, I just, I'm curious as to, I'm looking at the, oh, here it is, a citation fee breakdown. So $20 to the state of Florida, $12 to the school district, $5 to the school crossing guard program. Who operates the school crossing guard program? The city or the school? We do. And $3 to the Florida Department of Law Enforcement and $60 to the city. And we pay the third-party vendor, plus or minus $20 per citation. Okay, I, yeah, I'm curious to see how the pilot works. I mean, I think it sounds like a great concept. Excuse me?
See where it goes.
Yeah, exactly. But I'm just, I was just wondering about that.
Okay.
Thank you.
We have a few people signed up to speak. Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Orlando Torres, followed by Greg Parks, Hassan DeBaja and Jason Norton. Is Orlando here? Hello, Orlando.
Good afternoon. My name is Orlando Torres, 1920, South Ocean Drive, Fort Lauderdale. I come to you today as a resident, a father, a grandfather with little kids going to school. And I want to, first of all, commend you on looking at this technology. It's really something that I could tell you from personal experience. I'm also a longtime professional in photo enforcement and safety technology around the country and in Florida. And so I could tell you, this is something that will make a difference. This is something that's been proven out many, many times across my own clients, across the country. And the technology will really change the way that you do things. I've seen it from the clients that we have, like in the city of Atlanta, that are a major metropolitan area, kind of like we are. And so they've seen immediate changes in the behavior. So the the important thing here is to be able to take advantage as you're looking at technology to do more with less. So it was mentioned a force multiplier, that is exactly what this is. And this is a very unique business, a little bit different business model than they had for the red light cameras, where this is a, this is set up legislatively, like other states, to where you do not pay for anything until that violation is paid to you. Whereas, you know, in the red light camera legislation, it was more flat fee-based. And so you were kind of on the hook if the certain month didn't have enough violations. So really, what this becomes, it's a, it's a tool for law enforcement to be able to cover all the schools at once that you want to cover, to be able to use the offices for other things that are out there. And really, today's sad world, there's not a traffic stop that's safe for anybody. This allows you to do the enforcement in those speed zones, really from the same environment of an office, of a police car, rather than being out in the street where it's dangerous for everyone involved. So you want to use the technology. The cost really, there is no cost and no risk upfront for this technology. But what you do have is operational costs. And that's something that with our experience, we can certainly provide best scenarios, best cases, how to be efficient with these programs. And again, because it's a little bit different business model than red light cameras, sadly, there are going to be a lot of violators. The violator fees that come in will help you take care of the operational costs and probably do other things for the city that the city needs. So we have a lot of experience doing this. Again, as a resident, I wanted to come today and talk about the value of this. I commend you, I thank you, and I wish you good luck. There's some great opportunities for you.
Okay, great. Thank you. Greg Parks, Greg, are you here? Oh, there you are. From Tallahassee.
Yes, sir. Moved there to work on this law, actually, which I'll briefly talk about. Thank you, Mayor, Commissioner, the rest of the folks on the dais. I'll be very brief. It's your police department's program, they've done a good job. But I'm with a company called Red Speed. We did work heavily for three years to bring this legislation to Florida. We've operated under a nearly identical law in Georgia for five years for several dozen programs. So there's a lot of real-world experience on operational costs, on safety benefits, things that I think can be a benefit to you as you consider moving forward. As Commissioner Herp said, and several others now, it is a force multiplier. FPCA actually recommends this, IACP, which is International Association of Chiefs of Police. And it axiomatically will free up officers to respond to other emergency calls in a city with your activity that will benefit everyone and do community policing, other things that leadership would like. As far as the safety benefits, as I mentioned, we have probably 50, 60, 70, about 70 customers in Georgia. The largest school system in Georgia is Gwinnett County, Metro Atlanta, very similar to here. Since implementing our solution at no taxpayer expense, I would add, violations are down 95%. add, violations are down 95% in the monitored school zones. And there's only a 7% repeat violator rate. So it is a very effective program. And as Orlando mentioned, my good friend Orlando, that the law is, not just that we worked on it, but it is structured much differently. It's much more well-perceived by the citizenry. It's only in the schools, only during the school day, only 11 over compared to a red light, which is anywhere in your city, operates 24/7, could be a nanosecond into the red. It's substantially different, and I believe legislatively, much more well-thought-out. And anyway, it's your department's program, but we have some different experience. Just wanted to be here as a resource and commend you for considering this.
All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Hassan DeBaja?
Hello. Good afternoon, everyone. Well, my colleagues, competitor colleagues already put it well, so I'll save the time on that one.
Did they say it all?
Absolutely. No, they've done a great job, so hats off to all of them. My name is Hassan DeBaja. I live in Pepperdines, Florida, and I represent Genoptik. We are smart mobility manufacturer based here in Jupiter, Florida. We're right in your backyard. We have over 212 employees ready to serve this city whenever called upon. Just one, one thing, since this is a violator funding program, meaning very low cost or none will be paid by the city, I humbly request that when this goes to RFP, that the city and whoever's going to make the grading and recommendations on the vendor, to pay close attention to the vendor that has the most effective solution. That's very crucial, since it doesn't matter whether it's plus or minus $1 or $2 less, you know, that the vendor's going to collect. If the solution is not effective, what good does that do? And all the hard work and effort trying to save the children, you know, will go to waste, which will be a horrible thing. So I kindly, humbly request that whoever's going to do the grading, pay close attention to the effectiveness of the technology. Thank you so much.
Great. Thank you. And last, Jason Norton. Jason, are you here? There you are. From Webster.
Ready. Good afternoon, Jason Norton. Thank you for the invitation, allowing us to be here today. I think you've heard it all from my friends and colleagues. I've been doing this for 20 years, so I know them all very well, and we've worked together in the past. No matter whom you choose, this program will work. It will reduce your speed. We're pleased that we were the first in Florida to sign a contract. We were the first and only, to my knowledge, that has an operational program in Florida. We also delivered our ALPR to another client that goes along with our program. And so we're just happy to be here and part of this, and as a resource as well, along with everybody else. So thank you.
All right, great. Thank you. Anyone else have any questions or comments? There being none, we appreciate it, and we look forward to seeing the program moving forward. Okay, we're at...
Mr. Mayor, do we, this is a conference, so the question is, do we give direction to staff to proceed, or what is it?
I think that, I think that's what we're going to, because we need to adopt enabling legislation. So the state's created this, but I believe we need to create our own ordinance in order to implement the program. So if that's the case, and that's, that's my understanding of where we need to go with this. So I would suggest that we move forward as a commission with asking staff to prepare that ordinance and bring it forward for our consideration.
Okay, very good. Too late. We've already closed. It's okay. So, moving forward. Thank you, Chief. We appreciate it. Moving forward. So we'll go back to business one. It's now 2:45, so perfect timing. And Mr. Rogers.
Good afternoon, Mayor Commission, Ben Rogers, Director of Transportation Mobility. So you're going to get, I believe, your fifth update on the new river crossing effort. And BDO is here today to provide that update. We are nearing the end of their contract. We're expecting them to give us a draft report later this week. And then there'll probably be a week or two period where we go back and forth and hope to have a finalized product by the end of the month. So what they're going to do today is give you an update. Last time they were here is about 30 days ago. The presentation's really going to be bifurcated into two sections. The first one's going to be on technical. It's going to be talking about some of the concerns that they've heard throughout and how they plan on addressing them, missing the bridge pilings, what the station location is, property impacts, things like that. And then the second half is going to be focused on the financials, some funding strategies, and potential next steps. So with that, if there's no questions, I'll turn it over to BDO.
So before we begin, I just want to bring to the attention of the commission. Last Friday, we had the opportunity to visit with the tunnel folks in Miami. And I believe they're here today also to talk to us. The purpose of that was to, again, trying to determine the feasibility of a tunnel versus a bridge. And as we continue to investigate, it brought us to Miami. And when I say "us," it included folks from our city, which is you, me, the city manager, and my chief of staff, but also Lamar Fisher, and also Mr. Kelleher from the county administrator's office, as well as one other person from, from the Commissioner Fisher's office. So we all went down for a visit and heard a presentation. And today we're going to have the ability to hear from those folks. They're here today to talk about their response to what BDO has presented, and perhaps some other insights that they may be able to provide us with regard to this issue of the locally preferred alternative. All right? So please proceed.
Start with BDO?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor Dean, Vice Mayor Peaceley.
Welcome back. You were on, you were on, you were on, you were on.
I was on for...
Yeah, you're good.
Thank you, Mayor Dean, Vice Mayor Peaceley, and respected commission members. Thank you so much for having us. Since last we met, we gave you an overview of what we were working on, different areas, different issues, meeting with different stakeholders. Since then we have...
Could you go a little closer to the microphone?
The mic is, he's tall, the mic's short.
Is this better now?
It's better, yeah.
So since we met last, we have been, we've gone back and done significant work. Last meeting, we presented different issues which were highlighted to us. We have now resolved most of the issues raised by the various different stakeholders in the project alignment. We'll start with giving you an overview of station configuration, going into a revised project alignment, then go into a little bit detail in the agenda for all the issues which were raised by different stakeholders. We would also share some additional views that we received from stakeholders, especially the critical, those who operate and own the right-of-way. And then we would go into the project cost and some of the funding solutions, and also the next steps. So handing over to Nasri, my colleague, to start with on the station configuration.
Thank you, Omar. Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen, commissioners, we are following up on what we have presented to you before. And one of the issue at the time was the station, the station location and the station configuration. So based on that, we spent some time developing the station in such a way that it will not interrupt the operation of the existing railroad and to be done all underground from within the, within the existing right-of-way. So we configured the station to be, and this is not something new, it is, we have just completed a project like that, which was open to traffic, to operation two years ago in San Francisco, the Chinatown Station in San Francisco. The station, talking to Brightline folks, we understand that the existing platform are on piles. So in order to avoid the piles, we thought that we will move the platform further south and will be under Broward Boulevard. The station itself will be located at the future government center. It's going to be, as shown there in the, in the configuration there. We will have an access, a surface building in which all the facilities will be located, and then escalators and elevator to a lower level in which there will be a mezzanine. The mezzanine is what is shown in purple. And from the mezzanine will be excavated to a center platform, station with two tracks, one on each side, and will have, all will be built by a method which is called the new Austrian tunneling method. And this is being done in the U.S. under the name of sequential excavation method.
So to understand you correctly, the existing station will remain in place?
And operational.
I'm sorry?
And operational throughout the construction.
Right. And so, and you'd just be creating another level through escalators where people go down and be able to access the train through, at the tunnel level. Is that correct?
Exactly, yes.
And the purple section is, that's to gain, where does that take you?
That, that will be the mezzanine, and I will show you a picture of that, how does it look like, in a minute. But this will give us, will give you an opportunity to have this, at this location, a multimodal transportation center, in which you will be able to connect to the bus across the street, to the Brightline station, as well as to the new development that are coming up. And that can be done either underground passes or aerial bridges for pedestrian between them. What is shown right now as the mezzanine, it stops within the railroad right-of-way, but it can be extended, and you can have another entrance across the right-of-way where the bus terminal is located right now. This is an elevation of the configuration. The station will avoid the existing station piling completely, because we will start the location south of the existing piling. And it will still be deep enough to accommodate future underpass if Broward Boulevard is going to be put underpass or overpass. It will, it would not preclude any future modification that may be needed for Broward Boulevard to improve the traffic across the freight tracks. The configuration is, as you can see here, the two tunnels will be excavated first, and then the mezzanine will be excavated from the side. And then from there, we will come down to the middle, and we'll excavate the remaining earth that is between the two tunnels. They will, we will have, we are providing circular columns at about 25 on center, and heavy beams to carry the load between them and spanning between them. This is very similar to Fort Thotem Station in Washington, D.C.
So, looking at this cross-section then, is this, is this considered a single-bore tunnel or double?
No. This is, this is twin tunnels for the tracks.
Twin bore.
But at the location of the stations, the, the earth between the two tunnels will be excavated to create the space for the station where you can place the platform. This is a bird's-eye view, if there is a bird's-eye underground. But it is, what you'll see on the left is the vertical circulation element, vertical shaft. The one in blue coming across or the green part of it is the mezzanine. The mezzanine will be at, obviously, above the train level. And then from there in center, we'll come down into the platform. Platform will have columns at, as I said, 25 feet on center. This is close-up of that. It is, as I mentioned earlier, it is sequential excavation method that was developed back in the late '60s, has been used throughout the world. Some of the examples are Fort Thotem Station in Washington, Chinatown Station that I mentioned, and this one was open to operation two years ago. And if you are interested, I can arrange a visit to see it. I was a designer on that one. In Los Angeles, Regional Connector, in Berlin, Prague Metro, even Northern Boulevard in New York, and many of the stations that are done in Vienna are done in this method. This is, this is an illustration, and these are pictures and illustration coming from Chinatown Station, design and construction. You see the, on the upper left, you will see the two tunnels were excavated first, and then you'll have, by the name, it is sequential excavation. So you take a bite, little bite at a time, you install the rebars, what you see in the lower right, and then apply shockcrete to stabilize the ground immediately as you advance. And the picture on the upper right-hand side, you'll see the entire excavation is completed before taking those temporary walls that are on the two sides. Then you take those one out, and you build the entire interior structure, including the waterproofing and the final concrete and so on. So this is the station configuration. We are developing right now the construction sequencing of that, step by step. In the project alignment, we, what you've seen before is generally similar to what we will see right now. We did not change much of it, except at the location of crossing the river itself, as well as the location of the station itself. As we see on the illustration there, we're starting between West Fours, and, West Fives, and West Sevens by splitting. Again, let me go back one second. I'm sorry. Putting, splitting the tracks and putting additional track on the outside. And we'll continue with the same configuration as we had it before. As we get to the river crossing, and we will show it a little later in more detail, close-up, is we are diverting around the existing piling to avoid interfering with the piling, and then coming back on the other side and being parallel to each other, and continues for the station and the rest as confirmed before. In terms of the profile, initially, as you recall, after we got below the river at elevation minus 55, we started rising up. But because we wanted to put the station on the platform under Broward Boulevard, we kept that area flat, and we then continued going up past the, the mezzanine of the station. And with that, we, in a sense, kept the station sufficiently underground, and we did not exceed the 3%, limit, except in the entryway on the south side, which was, as you know, it was 4%, and it was agreeable to Brightline.
So I'll ask you a question. On the north side, that green section, it seems to, it seems to terminate at Sixth Street. Is that correct?
It terminates...
Does it go under Sixth Street, or is it...
Before Sixth Street, yes.
Say it again?
It terminates just before Sixth Street.
Before, right. So it's on, it's on the south side of Sixth Street.
Exactly, yes.
All right. Well, we can make adjustments.
That is, you know, can be worked out, at that point. Okay. Again, these are a little bit more in the details. There is no need to go through those, because we have covered them all before in advance. And this, again, blowout of the various pieces of the alignment, it's all the same as it was before. And again, I would like to illustrate that the approaches on the, this is from the south, everything is within the railroad right-of-way, and maintaining the existing tracks and existing railroad operation, the same as it is right now. Continue with the cut and cover. And here, as we get into the crossing of the river, we are diverting from the configuration as it was before to go around the piling on both sides of the piling. Here's a cross-section showing the diversion of that, and the, again, I'm sorry, diversion of the, of the piling and avoiding the piling completely, so we will not have to impact the piling and operation of the bridge itself. At the location of the station, this is the configuration. Again, at this point, we will have the two tracks, or actually three tracks, operation on the surface, because all the work will be done underground. And this is the north side, and the connection between the two, and so on. Okay? This is the modification in a more precise configuration is to avoid the piling. So we would need to have subterranean right-of-way or underground easement. As you can see here, and this is, all of these will allow the traffic to move at 45... As you can see here, and this is, all of these will allow the traffic to move at 45 miles an hour, continue through the, through that area. You can see those little white square are the piles of the, of the bridge, and we are diverting on those. We will have a three encroachment, underground easement into three properties. Two of them are city-owned, and one is privately owned. The largest encroachment is on the private property is triangular configuration of nine feet wide at the widest and 112 feet long at, along the lengths of the property. Again, this is about 60 feet below the surface. And here's the configuration again.
Yeah, yeah. So, just, to be clear, I think there may have been, when, when you were asking about Sixth Street earlier, Sixth Street is where we actually begin the tunnel boring machine? So, it will go under Sixth and then come out before Seventh?
On the north side.
If that was your question?
On the north side.
On the north side. Oh, I thought you said south side.
No, no, the north side.
On the north side, that's not, completely different. As you can see here, those are what you see, the vertical lines, those are the piles to scale as what we get them from the information that we have, and this is how we are avoiding, avoiding them. These are the various properties. The northwest property is city-owned, and it is an underground easement of about 13, actually 14 feet by 178 feet long. It is all in the grassy area, in a sense, park area. Okay, the northeast property, highlighted in red, again, it is city-owned, and there we have encroachment of only 2.5 feet by 87 feet. It is more, it is, again, I would like to mention, it is an underground easement, 60 feet deep and so on. The southwest, southwest privately-owned property, this is under development, to my understanding, and this is the potential underground easement needed, which is about nine feet by 112 feet in length. And this is the location where the potential underground easement is needed, in which there is no development right there at that location, it is more in the green space area.
And one note, on the only privately-owned parcel that is impacted by this easement, we've been communicating with symbol development, we're sharing technical details with them, and they're open, subject to the final, we're sharing actual engineering drawings and such, but they think it probably isn't a problem, and they're very open to the subterranean easement, subject to finally getting them all the data and what it is.
This is on the southwest?
On, on southwest side.
I spoke with that developer last night, and he's very interested in cooperating and allowing, because it's underground, so it's not impacting anything above ground. So, he saw no reason not to be able to participate in the, in the alignment that you've, that you've designed.
Yeah, just one more thing. If you see this picture, it shows the approved and in review design. So the location where the easement is required, it doesn't impact the actual design as well or the layout, which is under approval as well, whether it relates to the construction or the piling of the building in, in future.
Question about that, if I may, so, two things. I know years back, when we were looking at doing the sand bypass project down at the inlet, all of the property owners down at Point of Americas were rabidly against the project because they were worried about the vibration coming from the work that was going to be done on their, on their foundations, particularly after the collapse of the Champlain Towers. That's been a huge issue in Florida. So, talk to me a little bit about that, if you're looking at underground easement under, under a property, that I would imagine drilling is, causes a fair amount of vibration as you're going under a building. So how does that work, and, and why would that not be a concern for, for the building, the property owners, anybody else?
So firstly, I think, A, it's not directly under the building, but I think there are other technical things that now she can explain.
Okay. Obviously, like any other project, we will have to do noise and vibration assessment. The technology right now, and this location is going to be by tunnel boring machine. Tunnel boring machine is closed face tunnel boring machine with very little external noises that it might do or vibrate. The analysis that we do always about what will be the potential settlement, if any, on this, on the structure, and we will keep the, the settlement within acceptable limits. Here in this particular case, and if the development is what you see in green, is sufficiently far enough and the tunnel is deep enough that there will be no structural impact or impact on any of the existing or adjoining building. As I mentioned earlier, I did the Chinatown Station, and across the Chinatown Station, there were high-rise commercial residential building. There were a church right adjacent to it, and elementary school right behind it. We monitored all of them, and the maximum settlement that the high-rise building saw was half an inch, which is within the limits of acceptable.
Was that similar, though, in, in a type of soil structure and so forth that we have here?
It is very, very similar. It is mixed ground condition, similar to what you have here. Here we have sand, sandy layer and limestone layer. There, they had also sand and silt layer, and mixed with a lower layer is called the Franciscan Formation, which is highly variable, highly fractured, very soft rock of sandstone and shale.
Okay, thank you, because the two other things that I mentioned, they weren't also directly underneath. So the sand bypass project was not underneath, it was in the inlet, and Champlain Towers, obviously, was next door, so it was not under the building either. So, it's not about being directly under the building, it's about the vibration that travels through the ground and impacts the, the foundation, obviously, but, thank you.
The other point that I would like to mention, Commissioner, is it's the, the operation of the trains, when it goes into the tunnel, we are proposing, and we budgeted for, direct fixation with resilient pads in which to absorb any vibration coming through, through the railroad operation. Because the construction vibration is limited, and usually it passes as the TBM advances, but the rail operation is a continuous.
It's forever, right.
Forever, right, and this is, the solution exists, and is being done all over the world.
Okay, thank you. Please proceed. Can I, oh wait, before you do, what did, the blue, the blue buildings are approved but not built?
Yes.
The green is?
In review.
Is, is there what?
In, in, as an application has been submitted for review.
And the pink?
And the pink are under construction.
Okay, very good, thank you.
So, couple of issues were raised while having discussions with stakeholders, and most of the issues, we have met with county almost more than three times now. We've also met with FDOT team as well twice. Both of them have raised very, obviously, genuine concerns and, and that they have. One of the key concerns was related to the resiliency because of the environmental conditions and case of severe storm and hurricane. Globally, floodgates are accepted and well-implemented with safeguards, tunnels from the flood. Port of Miami has, and so does most of the New York tunnels as well. The biggest concern that also came while you can implement the floodgates, what is the cost of those floodgates? So as per our Level 4 cost estimate, the cost of each floodgate is $450,000, and the total cost of all floodgates, including contingency, will be $2.34 million. And this is in terms of the total size of project, not a huge and significant cost, but it basically serves the purpose.
Now, the flood, the floodgates, that doesn't affect, that doesn't affect ground level? In other words, for transit, for, in other words, if the floodgates are closed, they could still have ground-level passage through there, the freight, i.e. freight trains, right? Doesn't affect that one way or another?
Freight movement at the.
It's always going to be.
Will continue as usual because it's on the surface.
So if it's, for whatever reason, the floodgates have to be closed for flooding, for whatever reason, after an event, surface level for freight could still continue without interruption?
That is correct, yes.
Then the city commission had requested us to perform an evaluation of the property impacts for both bridges and tunnels. So before evaluating the property impact or the bridge alternatives, we requested the county to share with us the bridge design. The county has confirmed that no defined bridge design is currently available, and they have also informed us that they are in the process of engaging consultants, which I believe they've approved some amount to develop a bridge design. Therefore, determination of cost of land acquisition, impacts on property temporarily during construction or on a permanent basis is not possible without a design. Therefore, we are not able to put any number on what would be the impact of, on property as a result of a bridge alternative. However, in terms of tunnel alignment, we now know, as we have shown you, there will be some subterranean property access rights, city and private property on the crossings. We've had very positive interaction with the private property owner as well. The subterranean access rights, even with the city required, are 60 feet under the ground. Above the ground is mostly riverwalk on one side, and on the other side is a park. It would not have any impact. The other area that we, what would be the staging area cost? We have now identified multiple properties. Obviously, because of concern of not disclosure and making those interested sellers become interested in increasing the price, the selected property, whichever, when the project construction can begin, can be either leased or acquired. If leased, based on the estimate, is around $1.3 million for the construction period. And if acquired, the estimated maximum cost of that property would be around $20 million. Since the corridor has seen tremendous growth, the property, if acquired, can be sold upon project completion, and that can generate additional value for the project. We believe with the historic growth rate of the property and the corridor, impact of corridor, that can be 2X or 3X value that can be generated if the property is acquired.
So pursuant to our discussions and what we've been tasked with, we've also continued to reach out to stakeholders. As I said, we've reached out to, as it turns out, the sole stakeholder impacted by right-of-way, but in addition, we've had meetings with FECR and Brightline. We've had multiple meetings with Brightline. FECR, we had a very good discussion, a very open discussion, and frankly, it came down to, they're happy to review plans with us, and we have finalized plans that we believe are something that we would proceed with and review those for purposes of what it is, but they're open to frankly, anything that doesn't impact their operations, and we found them to be very frankly, great to converse with and interested in seeing the project move forward, with the understanding that it's not exactly their task to do it. Also, Brightline, as we'd said earlier, they've said 4% can be allowable, particularly when you're in the area where it's not actually even the tunnel, but it's rather where we're coming up, in the depressed area. So that's something that, once again, you'd need to get to final engineering on these issues to make sure that you're there. But they're good conversations, and we think there's a possibility, probability, that these aren't game-stoppers for this project, so we can keep moving forward with that. And we are also continuing, we've reached out to the marine industry, we've not had specific conversations with them, intend to continue seeking input from Coast Guard and others as we move forward with this to make sure that we've gotten all the input we could. And then obviously, the county, we've tried to take into all accounts any conversations we've had with them and continue to address those and continue and intend to do so.
In terms of FECR, I think their biggest concern relates to the construction period, and they have highlighted that their business runs on moving freight, and it's based on time. And if, if their speeds are slower as a result of construction or a prolonged delay as a result of construction, that is not affordable, and there is a huge cost which they will incur. Now, either the project takes over that cost, or the project has to account for that. They've shown, while they have never seen a tunnel design or a layout before, they've had some very brief discussions related to the bridge designs, and their major concern from, in relation to the bridge, has been construction within the right-of-way, which is, which may impact their operations during, and they have to run closer to this entire corridor at least at a speed of 40 miles per hour. And as a result, if any impact is on that, then there's, the cost has to be passed on. This was their message, obviously, they're, and rightfully, they wanted to see, but they were keen to listen to us, they were keen to look at a tunnel layout as well.
Please proceed.
So this section, basically, we've done Level 4 cost estimates. Just one area, which is still in draft form, is the station cost. Because we've just finalized the station layout, we're still finalizing a few modalities. If you recall, on December 19th, we presented a rough order of magnitude cost of around $880 million to a $1.1 billion. Our Level 4 cost estimate is around $888 million. We're still refining the station with the hope that the cost would come down. The ONM cost is around $2.5 million per annum. When you compare it with the previous White House report, that was around $21 million per annum. Our assessment of this cost is to be $2.5 million per annum. We also spoke with Greg Stewart, thanks to Commissioner Sternman for arranging that. He did advise that the cost of ONM was based on a lot of unknowns, and which, in, to be honest, in, in this instance, is because they were not very clear on how the tunnel would operate and what modalities would be required. But based on our assessment, we have done a lot more work in terms of the layout, which gives us a little bit more clarity, and in terms of developing the Level 4 cost estimate to be more accurate. We've sort of, this was, the red headers were what were presented to you before. If you see the guideway and track elements, our initial rough order cost magnitude was around between $300 and $350 million. Our Level 4 cost estimate is around $247. Station is a little higher, but we are still working on it. The total cost is around $887 million. Hopefully, when the draft report goes out, or within a week's time, we should be able to finalize or update the station cost. And once that is done, we would present the year of expenditure and as well. The year of expenditure has not been shared, only as a reason because we're still working on the station cost. Next area is funding solutions. So a few limitations and assumptions. The total project cost, which you would see going forward, for neither the bridge or the tunnel includes right-of-way access cost. This is part of the total BCR project. Similarly, similar assumptions were taken by previous PDNE studies and White House report as well. All options consider static county financial contribution. All options consider static FDOT and state financial contributions. In our assumptions for developing the project funding solutions, we have considered federal grants related to tunnel project as non-FDA. Our belief is due to strong community connectivity and justice components, and the importance of north-south connectivity, federal grants would be. of north-south connectivity, federal grants would be more suited for the project. In case of, we have also presented various different options, including utilization of federal financing and to leverage creative revenue streams such as value capture. And one very interesting value capture prop I would like to share with you all, we've been working on Inglewood project with one of the developer for a very long time, and this is outside the LA metro. One of the innovative ways that they have developed is advertising. The project would cover almost, I think, generate almost $3 million in annual revenues to support the project from advertising. And that's a value capture which has been created just for the project, and that's on a community which is, which doesn't get a lot of tourist attraction, which has, which is not as developed as Fort Lauderdale as well. So just sharing with you
Could you repeat that? Repeat that, I didn't, could you repeat what you just said?
So, one of the innovative ways that Inglewood Transit Connector, which is a very similar project, a light rail project, they have utilized advertising to fund part of the project cost. And advertising has been done in a very innovative way in terms of creating value along the corridor, inside the stations, inside whatever has been within their control. So that generates almost $3 million in annual revenue. So value capture should be looked at in a more broader term. Similarly, we have in Miami, Dade County, we are working on another project, we have done almost, it's a small town, we've done a value capture of advertising of from almost a half a million dollars per annum, but that's a smaller town as well.
Most of what I see of value capture, though, usually has to do with doing assessments of the property owners in the, in the area, kind of like we were doing at the wave. So value capture is a nice consultant way of saying tax increase, so.
That has been the case historically, obviously, but we want to present to you more options than what a typical TIF implementation would look like. And we've seen now other areas, but there can be other areas, like you can look at TODs as an ideal opportunity to create value for the project. TIF can be one of the specific area, TIF can be another one, but we're not saying what is the one specific solution you can adopt to, but just sharing with you what alternatives are available to you.
Yeah, because I'm just thinking, if all those property owners that came down and talked to us for hours on end last time that have billions of dollars of investment in the downtown area, want to make up that $258 million gap in financing by contributing to the cost of the project, I'm all for it, so just let them know.
Sure, I mean, the bottom line is, value capture is simply the question of, when you do these sorts of projects, they create excess value for those around it. It can be the developers, it can be people who utilize the areas around it, so sales tax sometimes is an aspect of it. Advertising, obviously, you couldn't have advertising if you didn't actually have the body. It occasionally could be ticket tax type things that go on. It's simply a broad term for creative ways to look at financing in a partnership way that ensures that, for example, the developers you're talking about may at some level say, you know what, if you want to have an increment, because my property is going to be more valuable in 20 years than it is now with this TOD going through, and that this could make it quicker, they may be on board. I mean, I, anytime you do these sorts of things, if you try and run it through as a way to trick the population, and I don't have to tell everybody up here who does this, right, but I've seen it time and again, where if people are trying to be cute with it, you're 100% right, you're getting people upset. But when we say value capture, we're saying that this is a creative project, that if it gets done, will create value for the community, and you should make the people potentially, or not make, but you can have the people who can potentially benefit, share in the cost along with the rest of the population. So it really, it does come down to TIF a lot of times, because that's the easy one.
So when we were doing the wave project, for example, so it's a really good example, when we were doing the wave project, we did value capture. So we looked at basically all the property owners within a quarter mile of where the wave line was going to be, and we hit them with an assessment, and they were essentially contributing for the line. And I'm very familiar with all the studies that, that reflect the fact that whenever you do TODs, the property owners in the general area that's considered to be accessible to the train station are going to see probably a 25% increase roughly in the value of their property. So I get that, I just want to make sure that we talk about that, that, you know, we're being transparent in what we're talking about, when we communicate with the community. Some of these other things that you talk about, granted, there are going to be some sales increases and things like that, but as you're probably aware, in the state of Florida, sales tax doesn't come directly back to the city. Sales tax goes to the state, the state gives it to the county, the county gives it back to the city based on the proportion of residents in the city relative to the rest of the county, not including the unincorporated areas, which is a long way of saying that we are a donor to the rest of the county when it comes to sales tax, because we generate more here than some of our counterparts throughout the rest of the county. So sales tax is not a one-for-one kind of a transaction for us. So I just want to understand, when we talk about this value capture, how we actually capture that value? How do I monetize, you know, the increase in, in business activity in the area without somebody stepping up voluntarily, like we have our Downtown Development Authority where they self-tax? We had the bid out at the beach where they self-tax. So if that's what we're talking about, then, you know, it's a great conversation to have, and I'd love to see the downtown business community step up, you know, and say that we, they recognize the value of this to their investments in that downtown area, and hopefully that's a conversation we could have. But I'd love to hear some of these other ideas about how we could actually do that value capture.
Yeah, I mean, they're, obviously, that's a piece of it, but then air rights, advertising rights, there are variety, when we say air rights, so building over city assets or assets related to it or possibilities. But, you know, part of the, the idea, and if you go to look at the discussions of value capture, the whole point of it is, it really is meant to be an open conversation with the community about how do we best do it in the particular community? And we raise it here because we think we are going to create value that at some level the community should capture. It's too early for us to say you should do it this way or not do it this way, and it's definitely not the conversation for the consultants to have with the community about. But, but you're, you're 100% right that you don't want to take, I think it is true oftentimes that a, the easy way is the TIF, right? And the harder ways are some of the more creative value captures, and we're just saying the entire group are things to be considered in it.
Now, the tunnel that y'all just went and looked at down in Miami, that was done as a P3, was it not?
It was.
So for a P3, there's a variety of revenue streams that support a P3, right? We just did the 595 Expresslands, and that's done through tolling. In other cases, a P3 may be financed through an availability payment. You know, so there's, there's a variety of ways in which a P3 can actually generate the revenue to support the debt and operations of it. Was that a design, build, operate, finance, and maintain? How many, how many of the components of a P3?
The Port of Miami?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was a DBFOM.
DBFOM, okay. What's the revenue stream behind that? So they don't have tolls on the Port of Miami, right? Are they assessing the cruise ship operator?
Maybe we should, maybe we should let the Miami people, the Miami people are here.
To be honest, I am not sure whether that was an, I believe that's an availability payment based.
I'm sorry.
But Chris Hodgkins, I think he's here.
Yeah, why don't we let the Miami people respond?
Well, I'm just wondering, in these funding solutions, is a P3 an option there? So that, that's why I'm bringing it up with them, because as we're looking at some of these things, I want to know.
Yes, it is 110% possible, but you should consider that a P3 in this instance would be, would have to be an availability payment based.
Okay.
The revenue generation can be bundled in, and an obligation can be passed on to them to generate this as a revenue based on the studies. It can be, okay, what's the rental revenue? Look at the Laguardia New Airport, Meridium generates significant revenue from leasing out spaces. So can we lease out enough spaces in the commuter space? What that value station can be generated? Can that entire mobility hub connectivity be converted into a larger shopping district within that? That stations can be converted? So what else can we do? That's how value can be created. But because this entire corridor is just built as an infrastructure, and user of that infrastructure will be the commuter rail, the Brightline, it's, the revenue is going somewhere else, actually. So that's why AP payment structure would work, but not others wouldn't.
That's what I was thinking, the only thing I could see, in my experience with P3, is it would be an availability. By the way, you guys aren't interested in bidding on a P3, are you?
So we are consultants, we don't bid for P3s or
Not a part of a consortium? I'm hoping for a GMP at that $888 million price. I was hoping that might be at the conclusion of the, of the thing, no? Not in there, huh? All right.
All right, let's complete, let's complete this.
So just to give you some perspective, this slide was added just to show you what county had thought about contributing. They had given three options in the White House report. Option one, where they would not secure any federal grants, which effectively gives them the advantage of avoiding the federal funding requirements like going through an environmental review. But my understanding is they would in any case have to go environmental review because of the US Coast Cards. So, but, but their contribution, when they were thinking of, and based on the mid-level Baskell Bridge, would be around almost $300 million. But then they look at FTA as an option, and FTA is primarily based on ridership. Based on the corridor ridership, just for the commuter, the chances of getting FTA eligibility is low, and the process is very long as well. But they would contribute $143 million, so approximately $150 million from FDOT and Broward County commitment. Similarly, if you're looking at a non-FDA, they would also be looking at $150 million. So we made this as a base before for creating what could be the funding options, because from our understanding with the county and discussions, the basic issue is the fiscal deficit, basically, how to get that additional funding, what the county is putting to contribution. So looking at, if the cost is almost $888 million, we looked at option number one, each FDOT and local county putting in $300 million. So the federal grant requirement would be $316 million. Option two is when they're putting in approximately $150 million each, the federal grants would be $600 million. And but what if we look at federal financing of $252 million, which would cost less than $10.5 million per annum in repayment cost? Then the federal fund grants would requirement would be 350. Now, these are all the permutations that we have presented, it can be that the county doesn't put any upfront money, they might utilize that to commit to a long-term, if you get more federal grants as well. And in terms of federal grants right now, we believe there are, there is ample money available over the, this year, next year, and a year after, till 2026. One of the most likelihood program would be intercity rail program, and this project, while it's a commuter project, would still fall within it. They have approximately $47 billion still available to be allocated. And if you look at the size of how many commuter and infrastructure projects happening across the country, Amtrak and Northeast Corridor has already been funded. So what is left is California and Florida. Brightline just received $3.5 billion out of that same program, they've, they've already received, I think, $6 billion before as well. So there has to be, this project puts itself as a right position in our discussion with the USDOT, in our understanding from them as well. And the way USDOT works is if you get different parts of DOT to support the project, if you get financing, the federal grant program can, can increase and would come to support it as well. So we have a strong belief that this is very likely. They are also coming up with a new program, which would allow certain specific waivers on NEPA requirements as well, expected to come out this year, and this would be a huge opportunity for projects like these to be at the forefront.
Okay.
Our next steps, Tom?
So as we said, this is a report on the draft. We plan to have a full draft report later this week. We'll then be having discussions with the city staff to make sure that we answer questions that may come out of that, and we'll have a full draft, or a full report later this month, by the end of the month. Then we can move forward, or if you so choose, move forward with next steps on this to actually developing a plan for what it would look like for a new river crossing. When we first spoke, we talked about apples to apples. We talked about looking at bridges, looking at tunnels, trying to give you data to understand them and be able to look at them one-to-one. Now, through this, we've realized there isn't a clear tunnel version. We've obviously had tunnels that have been discussed, or, sorry, strike that. We haven't had a clear bridge version, because the county has had to, through its conversations, go back and essentially is design a new one. But what we have been able to do is look at the tunnel and say, here is a tunnel. Is this the tunnel when it's said and done? Maybe, maybe not, because there are a lot of considerations. Where do you come up underground? What are we trying to solve for beyond just getting under the new river? What are we going to be able to get from the federal grants perspective? And so there are a lot of questions to be answered, but one of the things we've done is tried to say, if you look at the bridges that have been designed so far, and you look at this tunnel version, it at least gives you something to begin comparing them on nearly equal terms.
So what you're basically saying is that this tunnel, a draft proposal satisfies the need that we have to avoid a bridge coming through the city and still be able to accommodate the crossing that will allow the train at the appropriate gradient to be able to pass through and under the river. So that's just a tunnel, right? This is, okay, and at this, at this estimated price, right? And we can make adjustments at the, at the terminus, the beginning and the end, we can tweak it one way or the other. And, and so, because the main goal here is to try to accommodate the marine industry, right?
Exactly.
And at the same time, not devastate the downtown with, with construction that would, you know, continue to, to impose, impose what I feel would be restrictions and impediments to the growth of the downtown. So you're saying here today that this tunnel would be able to at least address those, those items, and we can work, you know, one of the big issues in the past has been the east-west corridors, you know, the vehicular traffic. And when I first heard about this, I said, wow, wouldn't it be great if we had a tunnel underneath Sunrise Boulevard and a tunnel under Davie Boulevard? But that was a pipe dream, you know, maybe. And, but at least we have, at least we have this initial suggestion as an opportunity to be able to accomplish the, the things that we first set out to try to accomplish.
That's exactly right, and it's a starting point, and what we do know is, we think from the research we've done and looking at this project, it is a great candidate for federal grants for a variety of reasons. And so there is an opportunity for the funding to come out very close, or similarly, when you consider the benefits to the community, that it does match up well with a potential bridge. Obviously, those final decisions are made by yourselves and not us. But so, moving forward, the county has been good to collaborate, and we've had great discussions, and we see them moving forward with where they are. You know, this is, I think, a conversation, obviously, that affects everybody there, and so were we asked to continue past the report later this month, we would see those as continued conversations to make sure we're aligning interests with them and bringing everybody, you know, making sure the information is there, because that really was where we started this, is to make sure everybody had the information. Continue and interface, share engineering with Brightline, share engineering with FECR, that's going to probably affect some of the things. We tried to, make sure, we tried to bring in every element we could think of, but you're not going to get everything, right? Continue with the community stakeholders, whether it be developers. Look at financing, you know, all value capture, alternative financing, all those sorts of issues. Begin to understand and move forward, we would suggest, on behalf of the county, or the city and the county, there are the federal grants, and that money's there now, you don't know how long it'll be there. And regardless, for commuter rail, for the community, you need a crossing regardless. So then continuing, move forward, next step, would also need the impact studies, the construction planning, economic, community quality the construction planning, economic, community quality of life, property impacts, geotech, topography, utility surveys, obviously refinement of the funding plans. I'm from Indianapolis, the racing capital of the world. We oftentimes talk in checkered flags and green flags. This is not the checkered flag. This is the green flag that begins to give you a sense of where you go to develop a project. But we do think that this is the basis that could help the city move forward if it chooses to.
Okay. Does that conclude your presentation?
Yes.
Okay, because I want to hear the folks from Miami, because it's getting... Do you have any questions that can wait right now? Are we okay? Okay, great. Thank you so much. We really appreciate it.
If I could maybe, just one question. So what happens to the old Brightline station? So we're building, so if I understand, the new station is under the proposed new government?
The Brightline station would remain as is. The Brightline station is designed, which, where it has 75-foot-deep piling. And it's been constructed as, what do you call it, Nasri?
The Brightline, the existing Brightline station right now, the platform itself, the two side walls, those are crash wall to protect the station, to protect the customers in case of a derailment of a freight train. So they are built on piles, 75 feet deep, they're about 10 feet on center. We have not seen the drumming, but this is just verbally what we heard. So it will continue operating as is without any interruption until the new station that can be built. They can opt to use the new station and use underground station, or they can continue on the surface operation.
So, wait a minute. So that means that the Brightline trains are going to continue over the Baskerville Bridge?
No.
At grade?
I said, no, no. I said, the station, underground station, can accommodate the Brightline trains. But during construction, they can continue operating on the bridge to the existing station, and we will not disrupt their station.
Right. So after your underground station is built, then the Brightline trains are going to go to the underground station?
Yes.
So they're going to tear down the above-ground station?
Not necessarily. It depends on Brightline, but the access from the underground has to be created as a separate exit.
Well, why would they keep it? I mean, why keep an above-ground train station when we don't have a train?
So Brightline operates with a separate security control measures.
Okay.
And, yes.
I'm just, I'm confused about this. We're building a new underground train station, and they just built a brand-new train station?
They have a gift shop. They'll keep it.
The concept that we're envisioned before were sort of like, we take the Brightline station out of commission for two years to build the station. That cannot happen, obviously. So the station, from the platform of Brightline station at the present time, we will be able to provide access escalators and connection to the underground station. So their facilities in the station, which is of the, not the platform, but of the street, they will still be functional. So the people can get there, go through security, put their luggage, whatever it is, and they go down and they go into the platform, from the platform to the underground station. The space in the platform, obviously, become unusable, not necessarily needed. And that Brightline can use it into commercial spaces, I don't know, restaurant, selling newspaper.
But it becomes functionally obsolete. I mean, it's a redundant facility, isn't it?
It is redundant, absolutely, yes.
I just want to make sure I'm not missing something. All right. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Thank you, gentlemen. Ben?
I was just preparing for Chris to come up. Are you ready for Chris in Miami?
Right. So I was walking down the aisle now is Chris Hodgkins, who is the genius behind the design, build, and operation of the tunnel in Miami, which goes to the port. And we had the opportunity to meet with him and invited him here today to talk about his experience and his suggestions. You've read the BDO report. I understand you've had conversations with those folks, so welcome to Fort Lauderdale.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Appreciate it. I have a presentation that I'll give briefly.
Good, great.
I think we got it all set up here. Do we? Here it comes. Perfect. Okay, wonderful. All right, so this is the Miami Tunnel. I'm the chairman of the board of the Miami Tunnel. I was the CEO, and I started off as the vice president when we started the tunnel. I'm the guy that painted the shovels gold from Walmart, so we could save a little extra dollars. And been with the very beginning of the tunnel. So this is the Miami Tunnel here. This was the day before the whole city shut down before COVID. This was right with, right with the Super Bowl. So here's where the port is. And I would say for all of you, you know, this city has the reputation of having the only tunnel in the state of Florida. So when we were building the tunnel, we would always reference the McWhinney Tunnel. My claim to the McWhinney Tunnel was, all I would do is honk the horn when I went through it. But this is the second tunnel in the state of Florida.
Before you begin, one quick, do we have this backup on our computer somewhere that we could follow with you, or?
I don't know. I gave them a...
Greg or David? His backup? What we're proceeding here, do we have this on our computer?
We can look at getting copies of that. We just noticed this right now, so.
Sure. So this is the pathway of the tunnel. We had previously, all the vehicles, all the cargo, everything going to the Port Miami, would come through 95, would go through five traffic lights downtown, and go into the tunnel and out the same way. The Port of Miami Tunnel created the only port that was accessible from a major interstate all the way to the berths at the port without any traffic light. So we created a successful private-public partnership. And that's what it truly was. It was with the county, it was with the state, and it was with the city. Together, we formed Miami Tunnel Concessionaire, which I'm part of. Meridium, who is my employer, were the largest infrastructure firm in the country. And somebody mentioned LaGuardia. We just successfully did LaGuardia. We received all sorts of awards for that. We have Ferrovial as our operator. And the deal, the federal support for the deal was TFI that provided a bridge loan. So the financing for this job, we'll talk about it later, got all sorts of awards. We won Deal of the Decade from International Finance Magazine. We were trumpeted as a model for what can be done. So why did we do it? Kind of like for the same reason you're looking at taking care of that bridge or the tunnel. Port Miami is the cruise capital of the world. More cruises go out of Port Miami than anywhere else. And it's responsible for 334,000 jobs. It's our second economic engine in Miami, in Miami-Dade County, the first being the airport, followed by the port. We have 1.2 million TEUs, kind of like what you have at your port. And so it's a very, very important part of our downtown and our community. And I don't know what I just did. There we go. So FDOT, FDOT retained the responsibility for getting and keeping political consensus in the formal support, but don't think that was easy. This was 30 years in the making. There were more people against it than were for it, than were for it and against it. It was quite a debacle. And, but the biggest thing about it was looking, FDOT getting us, getting the P3 contractor to take the risk. But the biggest risk on this was the geotechnical concerns. You know, I just heard BDO mention there's a 75-foot-buried pylon, right, at the Brightline station? Well, are there any other 75-foot-buried pylons on our way? We don't know that. And you don't know that either. So who's going to take the risk on those geotechnical and those digging concerns? So all those things needed to be worked out. We share the insurance risk. So when insurance goes up, we share part of those costs. Ironically, because of the design of our tunnel, we're designed after the Mont Blanc Tunnel accident, so we're considered one of the safest tunnels in North America. And we have all sorts of designs that we'll talk about later. The concessionaire, we retain the cost of increases. We took a risk. We said we could build it for 643 million. That's what it cost, 643 million minus 90. So we actually finished something you don't hear about in South Florida. We finished it on time and under budget. When's the last time you saw that? We never saw that in Miami. So we shared the risk of stemming the unanticipated geotechnical concerns. We took 150 million and set it aside. But to try to get into that 150 million, the contractor had to spend at least 3 million on their own to access that. So it was, as you asked, Commissioner, it was a DBFOM. It was a 35-years-of-construction, 55 months of construction, followed by a 30-year operational contract. The financial close was in October 2009. We started in October 2009. We put our shovel in the ground on May 2010. And our operating period now goes to 2044, of which I'll be rocking in a chair on a porch. So it's a 920-million concessionaire's cost for design. The Miami Herald always advertised it as a billion-dollar tunnel. That's what it was, all in, billion dollars. The construction was 640 million. The financing and then the operational cost is what got us to a billion. The annual payments from FDOT, availability payments. No one wanted to pay a toll in the tunnel, so we're actually paid. An availability payment means just that. Is it available? So when you come to our tunnel, which I would all invite you on your schedule to come down and see what we have, I've always amazed, as I saw people talking about tunnels, nobody came down to the tunnel that we had in Miami. So I want to invite you to come down. But our milestone in availability payments do just that. If you were to the tunnel right now, you would see that we had staged tow trucks. We have a heavy tow to carry the 18-wheelers. We have a flatbed, because we're the exotic car capital, kind of like you, of the world. So you can't use a heavy tow to tow a Lamborghini or a Ferrari. So that's why we have a flatbed. But we would station them at either end of the tunnel. Why? Because availability means just that. If somebody broke down and they blocked the lane, and we didn't get there and get that car out within 25 minutes, then the clock starts ticking. And the clock just doesn't tick. It ticks loudly. For example, we had an incident, it's called an unavailability event, UE. It means our tunnel is unavailable. We had one where we were about 12 minutes late, and it cost us over $18,000. So, you know, it is what it is, and it works. So lane availability, the goal is to maximize the tunnel being available all the time. But you don't care about this because you've got a train. So the same thing would be sure, you know? Is that train available to use the tunnel? What if it's not? So you would look at an availability payment from FDOT in some ways. So we came in to build the tunnel, and we built it right after the Marlins Stadium. Remember the Marlins Stadium? So Miami-Dade decided they're going to build the Marlins Stadium. They funded a billionaire to say, here's all our tax dollars, build a stadium. And then what ensued was, the mayor was recalled, two commissioners were recalled. Miami's in the pits economically, it's 2010, and nobody has the appetite for a large publicly-funded construction job, much less a construction job that's threatening the economic engine of Miami-Dade downtown, the port. So we came in at a 68% unfavorability rating, and we had to turn it around. And what we did was decide to turn it around and make it all about the community. So we started a local hiring program called Operation 305. And Operation 305 meant we were hiring people from the 305. We were hiring vendors and contractors from the 305. And in the end, 83% of all our employees were from Miami-Dade County. 56% of all our subcontractors and vendors, over 800 million, was spent right in Miami-Dade. We held job fairs, vendor fairs with the Haitian Chamber of Commerce, the Black Chamber of Commerce, the Greater Miami Chamber of Commerce, Veterans for America. We saw three people together. We were meeting with them. So the idea was to be inclusive. We did strong community outreach, but we didn't do just strong community outreach. We looked at all the demographics. So we made sure that our diversity levels matched the community. So we were just what the community was. We were 28% black, because that's the percentage of the black community. We were 51% Hispanic. We were 11% Anglo. We made sure we put women in positions of management. And I do want to introduce our CEO, Wendy. Wendy Conformy is my CEO. She runs the thing. She was also a design engineer for Jacobs when they were building the tunnel. So I got to hire the smartest girl in the class, and she does all our homework. She's the absolute most wonderful thing we have. So we did strong community outreach and multi-jurisdictional collaboration. We worked with every municipal entity, right? So we worked with the county, because we were on the port. We worked with the city, because the AMRI, you mentioned the commitment, the AMRI CRA helped fund this for 50 million. Now, for 643 million, you might not think that's a big deal, but it was big to the CRA. So we made sure, for example, with them, you know, they helped with job recruitment within that community redevelopment district, and we all had a good partnership. Technical innovation. So we have the most advanced technology in this tunnel. We have vibration sensors. We have infrared sensors. We have over 100 high-interactive cameras. We have, we don't have a sprinkler system. We have a deluge system. People don't die from flames. They die from fumes. We suffocate those fires. I heard one commissioner in the county say, well, a tunnel doesn't make sense, because we're right at sea level here, and the tunnel would flood. Well, we happened to win Climate Action Smart Cities Award for the most resilient tunnel in the United States, because we have floodgates. The safest place to be during a hurricane is probably inside our tunnel. We have floodgates that come down when the Coast Guard says it's code Yankee, vacate the port. Our floodgates take 20 minutes to come down. They're 55-ton floodgates. They come down and seal the tunnel watertight. So we have a state-of-the-art control room operations center, and this is all a result of the international tunnel safety standards. We don't like saying we're the safest tunnel in North America, because it almost feels like you would jink yourself. But we have every advanced technology. We have, at the time, now, you know, it's nothing more than a Ring camera, but at the time, we had what we called automated incident detection. So if, for example, we had cars, and all of a sudden, there was a bicycle, anything out of the model, our alarms would go off and tell us what we're going. But it didn't matter, we had alarms, because we always had at least three people with eyes on the road at all the times. So construction. We were right in a fishbowl. So we went right off of 395, 120 feet under government cut, and we went right to the port. We were literally in a fishbowl. And when you look over here, you can see, see to the left, that's Jungle Island. So somebody talked about vibrations. Well, let me just tell you who vibration affects the most. Animals, right? So we literally had real live test monkeys at Jungle Island. So we had monkeys, and birds, and lions, and vibration and noise would make these animals psychotic. So Jungle Island had all sorts of measurements, as well as we did, to make sure that we weren't going to impact them. And on the other side of that, less than 50 yards is what? A children's museum, which turned out to also be a school. So we had schoolchildren going here while we were digging and building and doing all this tunnel works. So it's just, I remember when they were digging 16 feet under our construction trailer. It's not, it isn't... It's, it's not, it isn't like a drill that's, you know, banging away. The vibrations from it are minimal. The way the tunnel boring machine works, it inches itself along. We add a polymer as we, as we deal with grinding the stone, which is a coral limestone. There's five different status, stratus, the lower you go, the higher, the harder the stone is. It's almost like a granite. Our tunnel boring machine, Harriet, named after Harriet Tubman, she lost her teeth four times because of how hard the stone was. If we weren't a tunnel project, we were a bridge project. Because while nobody was looking, we went and we filled in the middle of MacArthur Claws Way to create an additional four lanes for access and egress to the tunnel. This is our girl here. This is Harriet, our tunnel boring machine. It was 42 feet in diameter. It was three football fields long and it was awesome. It was, it was quite an ordeal to be part of. This is, as we set her up in the westbound lane. Those metal bars there are called the TBM thrust cylinders. It's what we had to put in so the TBM could take its hydraulic thrust mechanisms and push against that thrust cylinder and move the TBM forward as the TBM wheel, where the teeth were, went around three times a minute as it tried to crush the stone. This is our girl, she came out over on, over on the port. That was a big day because she finally came out. And we didn't know if we were going to see that day because you're dealing with the unknown, right? You're dealing with geology you don't know because you've never been down under the ground 120 feet. So unlike your tunnel, if you ever build it, we were 120 feet below the surface. And if you want to know people that are concerned, it wasn't the wealthiest zip codes in the United States, which were right next to us, Palm, Hibiscus, Star and, and Fisher Island, all right? The richest zip codes in the United States, who had, you know, a bevy of lawyers ready to sue us. And I might add, we were never sued because we did outreach. We worked with the community. We kept them informed. We answered their questions and we put them at ease. But our biggest concern was right there, government cut. Because of what you expressed today, the marine industry. Were we going to create some type of fissure as we were drilling and the water would drain from government cut? They were afraid. They were afraid because it's construction in South Florida, right? If it can't go wrong, it will. If it'll be delayed, it'll be delayed. It'll be over budget, it'll be over budget. So they were, they were, just didn't want a debacle. So we were able to finish the tunnel on time and under budget. And we met all our concerns. And we were, we were rather sticklers. I mean, we had some concerns that we had to fight with our contractor. And then we opened our tunnel and we had a state-of-the-art safety system. You know, we had roadway cameras, emergency telephones. So we have all this electronics. But while we had all this electronics, we still had like a copper wire ring-down phone, like, you know, Batman had. You know, you pick it up and someone answers on the other end, World War II technology. But that's because when you rely on all these tech, electronics, in the case of a disaster, you need something that works. So we still have that, that red phone. We have dynamic messaging systems. We have control gates. I mean, we have, we have an overhead height sensor that when trucks, right? It's Miami, right? So let's pick your trucks. Every single overheight truck wants to use the tunnel. So if you try to use the tunnel and you're overheight, we have infrared sensors that measure you. And then a big ship's horn goes off about this size. It blows them, almost blows you right out of the seat of your car. And then we have chains that hang down that will hit the top of the truck because it's overheight. And then after that, we have a gate that comes down. And then after that gate, we have another gate. And after that gate, we have the third gate. We've had trucks make it all the way to the third gate. So, you know, you can't, you can't outlaw or do away with stupidity. So all these things we have, we have to worry about good old hurricanes. And so these are the hurricanes we face. And I can say, you know, two years ago, we lowered those floodgates 22 times. Last year, we didn't lower it once and that was nice. So here's our secret weapon. These are our floodgates. Again, 55 tons. The mayor and your city manager and others saw the floodgates. These are the floodgates right here. And without the floodgates, our tunnel would be uninsurable. So now when we meet with our insurance folks, Wendy does all our insurance work. We talk about our floodgates and all our technology. So our insurance, unlike your insurance, or like many other infrastructure projects' insurance, has never gone up in 14 years more than 5%. So that's because we have a program called, we're not the stinking Lincoln. Because remember when we had Hurricane Sandy, her, the, the Lincoln Tunnel flooded, all those subways flooded in, in New York? Well, we were dry as a bone. Al Roker came down to do a story about what we were doing. Here's a fire incident management. So we're, we're all over the place. We're always prepared for the worst. So listen, we did it on time, under budget. All we believe in is operational excellence and continuous improvement. We keep our employees happy and our savings has been astronomical in regards to our insurance. We've saved over $14 million over the past 10 years on our insurance costs by working with our underwriters. We received just about every award. We got the Deal of the, Deal of the Decade based on our financing. We got Project of the, of the Year by Engineering Magazine. We got the Social Responsibility Award by the Greater Miami Chamber of Commerce. And so we got all sorts of, but here's a biggie. You know, when can you get a newspaper to say something good about an infrastructure job? This is the Miami Herald saying, Port Tunnel, a model of success. So we're thrilled about what we do. We're glad the mayor came down to see us in Miami. I was, I was cursing as he did the Elon Musk tunnel. And because I, I'm not a fan of, it just wouldn't work. But anyways, I'm so glad that he came down to, to see it. And he brought the city manager and, and others. But you know what I was surprised about? And what I said to them at the table was Commissioner Fisher was with them, with the deputy county manager. And they said, well, would you be interested in doing a tunnel in, in Fort Lauderdale? I said, well, first of all, we definitely would be interested in doing a tunnel. You know, we just did LaGuardia. We're doing, we're working on the Sepulveda Pass, the 405 in, in LA. I'm working on that. I'm working on a major interstate up in Georgia. But we would love to be dealing in our backyard. But as you know, you know, the McWhitty Tunnel didn't happen in the day, right? McWhitty Tunnel didn't happen because people said, let's do it. It was a big argument in the community. But what I was surprised about at the day they came down is when I called the Scott to say, I'd like to speak to the mayor and invite him down. I was surprised about how the county commissioner and the mayor were talking about how we can work together to come up with some alternatives. Maybe not necessarily just the tunnel, but how can we work together? So I said to them, listen, I didn't know you folks were talking like this. So I was very much encouraged by that. And so we would be glad to look at this. We met briefly with BOD today. We've seen their report. We've seen the White House report. Wendy was an engineer that worked on Jacobs. We'll be glad to take a look at this. We'll be glad to work with you closely. First, the best step for all of you would be come down and see what we have. Kick the tires, ask crucial, critical questions about, is it affordable? But let me just tell you this. It's all about quality of life. So our tunnel wasn't an idea. Our tunnel was about taking 80% of the trucks out of downtown, right? Those trucks used to come right through our downtown, shift their gears, spew their diesel, and that's changed the whole quality of life. So you folks are in charge of all that. So whatever you want to happen, you can make happen. But the only thing I'd say to you is you don't have to make a decision tomorrow either. You know why? Because if you made a decision today, it's going to take you five years to get there by the time they finish, you know, your, your environmental assessment. That's how, it's going to take at least three to four to five years to get that environmental assessment. During that time, you can come up with alternatives. But don't close the door by saying there's only one alternative. Look at your options, but know that this isn't something that's going to happen in two months. I know people are running around, but you're not going to be able to get any federal funding until your environmental assessments are done. And, and there's money out there. So you don't only have money for transportation, but this is a rail. So there's even more, more available monies in regards to rails. And there's one place that does some of the best public-private partnerships in the nation, and that's FDOT. So we have been used as a model for a lot of public-private partnerships around the country. So we would be glad to work with you. We would be glad to, we'll, we'll meet with the commission, the county commission also. But we appreciate the mayor taking the time to come down, bringing the city manager. And I was just impressed the way everybody was talking at the table. I didn't see this head-to-head that I've been reading about. So it was encouraging. But that's, you know, that's how things happen. So, you know, you can, you are in charge of what happens. So anyways, we remain available, be glad to take any questions if you have.
I would love to go down there. Mayor and I couldn't go together because of the sunshine rules. We're not allowed to be, to take a field trip sort of together. So Greg, at some point, if I could arrange for a tour, I'd love to.
Yeah, just, you know, we'll work through, Greg, you let us know and we're glad to have you. And you'll, you'll, hopefully you'll be impressed. And we got good swag.
I'm impressed, Greg. And listen, here's the question. It's going to have to be called Operation 954 though.
Yeah, we'll do a 954. I mean, for example, I have to tell you, if, if we were in the room today, you know who would be filling this, filling this auditorium? All your union members. Because we hire, we hire Launa, we hire IBW, we hire operators, carpenters. We hire local. So you would see all your local employee base saying, give me this tunnel. We hired over 7,000 people. 83% of them were local.
So why didn't you build a bridge?
We built bridges too.
No, why didn't you build a bridge for the port?
Well, we don't build a bridge to the port because it was obsolete. It took 30 years, right? We just welcomed Icon of the Seas. Icon of the Seas was massive. It was big. I went out on my balcony to watch it turn around. I said, I wonder if this ship's going to be able to turn around. It turned around, but it was huge. It holds 9,000 people. That's a lot of people. So ships are getting bigger and bigger and bigger. They were for a while getting taller. Now they're more like bathtubs. But we didn't build a ship because ships are going higher and the best way was to do a tunnel. And at the time, you know, everybody was thinking a cut-and-cover tunnel. So, you know, a tunnel boring machine is doing it under the ground. Our tunnel boring machine alone cost 45 million. It was built by Heron Connect. But so, so Jose Abreu was once the FDOT commissioner, was once chairman of the airport. But his first job, he's now retired, he's about 70 years old. His first job out of engineering school was to study building the tunnel. So it took 30 years in the beginning to figure out how they're going to get this done. Now, I think you guys could beat a record of 30 years and nobody wants to wait around that long. But that's how long it happened. And believe me, it was a fight. It was a local fight. And not only was it a local fight, but then, you know, we had industry people saying, oh, it's going to destroy us. So we had, you know, we had a lot of debates going on up at, in Tallahassee. But in the end, everybody's taking credit for it, right? Everybody takes credit for its success.
Can I ask you a silly question? Going back to slide two, page two, I mean, I'm looking at, at the direction you took. And it looks like you follow 395 as it goes out, curves around, back again underneath Watson Island, and then comes back to the port. If you're going underground, why would, why did you decide not to take a straight line, go straight across? I mean, you followed the highway. Was there some like engineering reason for that?
Yeah, we wanted to go the shortest instance out of the water. So that's under the water right there, okay? So we went through the shortest distance under the water.
No, no, go to the next slide before that. No, no, keep, keep going back. I think number two. Keep going. There. Why would you not follow the red line?
Oh, the red line, the red line.
That's, that's the railroad tracks, but.
Yeah, yeah, the red line is the original path.
Right.
Now, that red line is where all the placard vehicles, all the hazmats, they still have to use that because we don't allow any hazmats in the tunnel. Although our tunnel segments were designed with the characteristics. We had a special fiber through there that was designed by the materials lab up in Tallahassee for FDOT that is blast proof. But nevertheless, we don't allow any placards. So we took the path of least resistance and the shortest distance underwater. Again, the cruise industry was concerned about fissure. They were concerned as we're digging, what if there is a crack in the, in the, in the, in the geology and all the water drains? It happened once in South Africa. So they were, they were, they were concerned about that.
Anyone have any other questions? So I do.
All right.
So it's interesting, the story you tell us, you know, we certainly don't want to wait 30 years to make a decision. And, and I don't think the county or anybody's interested in waiting that long. Because we do want to implement commuter rail if we feel it's going to be feasible and makes sense through the city of Fort Lauderdale. So having looked at the BDO report and just your own understanding of Fort Lauderdale, how would you approach the, the, the crossing of the New River?
Well, first of all, you know, what interest do you represent, right? So the biggest interest is, of course, for the people here, Fort Lauderdale, and what is going to benefit them in the future. And I think you're going about it the right way by, you know, by having competing interests, looking at it. I would just not let anybody say this is the final answer so quickly. Time is not of essence, even if they said you're going to go with only a bridge. There's still, there's still time to work. But, you know, I would, I would look to the future. I would look at not, you know, number one, what's feasible? Because you're not going to do something that's not feasible because the taxpayers wouldn't allow it. But what's, what's, what's the best for the future of, of Fort Lauderdale, you know? And I know today, when I was running here and I was late, I was sitting by the tracks, you know?
Well, I think that speaks volumes, right?
Yeah. And what's, what's the best for the stakeholders that are part of that? You have to work with the stakeholders, you have to work with the community. And, you know, for example, we used our spoils to reclaim toxic landfills that we turned into passive recreation, biking, hiking trails and soccer fields. So you got to give a, as you're doing this, you know, there needs to be community considerations too. So same thing with a bridge. But I've looked, I've looked at the White House report briefly. There's some numbers I don't agree with. That's an expensive report. I, I don't mean expensive report and paying for it. I mean, their analysis is rather expensive. And, you know, I mean, the nice thing about it is some of those numbers actually reflect, reflect the post-COVID numbers, right? I mean, I've worked at jobs that have almost doubled since COVID, right? And the community's shocked. And they say, oh, we don't know if we want to do it. So we set it aside and now a year later, they'd love to do it because it's even tripled more, you know? But yeah, my advice is to continue, continue the dialogue, continue the debate. There's not one true answer.
Well, we have to ultimately come to one answer.
Yeah, oh yeah, sooner or later.
So we can't, we can't.
But you have to have the viable alternatives that are feasible.
So, so, all right, so the next steps. You've had the, you will have the opportunity to review more closely the BDO report because you said you, you sort of just scanned it. So you, you'll have that opportunity. And, and would it be something you would consider about making an analysis and coming up with a proposal that would in some way suggest that, you know, what, what a tunnel approach would cost and the feasibility of it? I mean, you clearly know how to implement it. Bringing in local contractors and getting in, buying from not just the stakeholders, but the residents and, you know, people that are going to be impacted by it. Putting aside the purpose of it, which is the commuter rail, what's in it for Fort Lauderdale? You've, that's the attitude you had when you built the Miami Tunnel. What's in it for Miami and the people in and around it?
I mean, that's the way you have success.
Right.
So, I mean, look at, when you go to a surgeon and you say, what should I do? They say operate, right? When you come to an infrastructure builder and you say, what should we do? We say build it, right? So the thing is, is that you've got to come to a consensus. We will, we will take a look at this. But, you know, we want to do it in conjunction with what the county's doing so that, you know, we're not on a.
Well, I think that the county would be amenable to, you know, I, I think the county's being driven by cost. Cost and, and timetable to complete. That was what, that was the message that I got last time we met jointly. And, and based on the White House report, they said, oh, it's a slam dunk. It can only be a bridge, okay? But now we realize that those numbers are, are not necessarily. But now we realize that those numbers are, are not necessarily appropriate. And so I know that there was even some suggestion that an unsolicited proposal made to the, to the county and to FDOT might be an approach. But given, given the information that we have today, that the only way to do it is, is to make sure that the numbers and the financing are gonna be consistent and such that the amount of money that the county would have to contribute would be no more for the tunnel than for the bridge. And I think BDO explained to us today that that could definitely be an option because of other financing that's available at the federal level. The county would be, the county would pay the same amount either way. That's the ideal situation.
Right, and the other, the other is, is, you know, to put skin in the game, right?
What was that?
To put some skin in the game. I mean, if, if, let's say, let's say you want a tunnel.
Right.
Then maybe Fort Lauderdale says, we want a tunnel, and we're willing to participate.
Well, those are the other, as Commissioner Hertz was bringing out, you know, those are some of the other funding options that we might consider.
Right.
And like that we did with the wave streetcar. So, I mean, that would be the way we would do, we would raise that money.
I mean, here's, here's what I would say. Last time I was in Fort Lauderdale, I was here for the Smart Cities program where I was one of the speakers. So I travel around talking about transformational infrastructure. So transformational infrastructure is just that. It changes communities.
Right.
And the only way you get to do transformational infrastructure is if you do it, right? There's a lot of things that people want to do that haven't happened or aren't happening. So the only way it happens is when you say, do it. So, I mean, we'll take a good look at this. We'll bring some folks in, and, and we'll be back to tell you how we might be able to get there.
Okay, all right, sounds good, sounds good.
All right, thank you. Any other questions?
If I may, so those floodgates, because it was hard for me to tell from the BDO presentation, because the pictures just weren't really doing it justice. How much do the floodgates cost?
A floodgates were about $3 million each.
Okay, that, that's, that was my question. So your floodgates are $3 million, and what they have in theirs?
Well, they're much bigger tunnels, though. Their tunnels are 44.
They're 42 diameter. A tunnel, our, our gates weigh 55 tons.
Yeah.
They're designed just for our gates. So they're massive. You should come down and take a look at it.
Oh, I've, I've been through the tunnel.
You have?
I've been, I haven't visited with you, but I've been through the tunnel. I go down to Miami a lot.
But no, John, that, they're much bigger tunnels. It's 44 feet wide. These are, the, the train tunnels are gonna be half that.
Okay. The one thing you said, and I just wanted to be clear about this. So you said you'd be willing to come back and, and continue this dialogue. So just from a, from a, looking at this prospectively, I'm assuming that you and your firm might be interested in doing a P3 if that were to become.
We would only do a P3. We're an infrastructure finance organization.
Okay, so it has long been the position of the attorney's office, and I doubt that this has changed, that anybody that's involved in doing any studies, business plans, or anything else is not eligible to bid on anything. So just throwing that out there. So if you're gonna help us develop concepts and plans and everything else, and you want to potentially be a bidder at some point, or a partner in a consortium.
Yeah, we're not gonna help you develop plans or concepts.
Okay.
We're gonna look at the feasibility of whether or not we can get involved.
Okay, I'm just saying, you can't do that on our behalf. If you want to come and study on your own, you're welcome to do that. But we can't hire you to do that.
But we're not looking to be hired. We don't, we don't do that, yeah.
I, I don't want to preclude you from having the opportunity to be a participant down the road.
No, we're not looking to be hired.
Okay.
Only to do the job itself. So, I mean, we would certainly be looking at you to share all your information. And, and we would want to work with you in regards to what you're doing for funding. Because for us, you know, we have a fiduciary responsibility to our investors, which are mostly teachers' funds, pension funds, things like that, to make sure we're doing the right thing. And, you know, and then we want to see if it's actually, can come to fruition. We don't want to be on a fool's errand, you know, to say we're just coming up with an alternative.
No, I just, I just want to make sure that we are not providing an unfair advantage to somebody by opening up our doors and giving them a tremendous amount of assistance, which they then come back and they submit an unsolicited proposal, and then nobody else has the opportunity to come in and do the same thing. So just from our side.
Yeah.
In terms of the integrity of the procurement process, I want to make sure that this is a fair playing field for anybody that might want to participate, should we go down that path. So, thank you.
Okay, we'll make sure. Any other questions?
We'll make sure that we follow all that. Thank you, Commissioner Hertz, for bringing that up. And we'll work with the auditor and attorney's office for any, any concerns as well.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Have a great day.
And I'm sorry we took you away from your trip that you were going to take. Is Jeremy Holland here? He had signed up to speak on this item. That's, was a great presentation. Thank you, Nazri, for all your work. And, and Ben, did you want to conclude with anything?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up, Mayor, and just say.
We're gonna have a chance to, we could talk now, right?
Wait, hold on a second. Did you want to, did you want to say something?
No, I was just gonna do some closing remarks, but if the commissioner wants to make comment first, I can wait.
Okay, Commissioner? Your mic is not on.
You want to give your closing remarks, or do we, do we, and then we talk about our, our thoughts, or?
I'll defer to the mayor and his preference of order.
How would you like to do, run a show?
Well, what would you like to say?
Oh, I have some, no, the presentation, I have some questions about it.
Go ahead.
We'll wait it to the end. Okay, if BDO could come up here, that'd be fantastic. Let me start by thanking you.
Sorry, my two colleagues had to catch plane.
Oh, my goodness. Ah, darn, I would have loved to have had a chance to speak before the left. You have a couple minutes, though, right?
Absolutely.
Okay, good, good, good. First of all, on behalf of, of me, could you let them know I want to thank them for the time they've spent? We had a couple, several meetings at this particular point, the last of which was Saturday. You've given up, I think, four hours of your day, and then we had a site tour. We went out to the railroad tracks, looked at the south end, north end. We looked at the, at the station itself. I want to thank Ben for arranging it. You, last minute, you did a very good job bringing everybody in and the participants. We had community leaders, BDO was there, from the county, the people from the workshop, business leaders, as well as, I've spoken to Brightline a few things. Number one, I just want to, John, Commissioner Hertz had asked a couple questions, so just the things that we had spoken about, but just to bring out. The proposal was about 880 million, 888, a little under 900 million. Some of the things that were put out there is the way that, with that number, that would have the commuter train going under the river. That would have a platform to accommodate the commuter train. And for that number, I know Brightline was gonna continue during construction on the, at surface level. But for that number, it did not include a, having Brightline underneath. Is that correct?
The station at the present time can accommodate, it is, in terms of the platform length, is 500 feet. And if Brightline would need longer platform, it has to be made a little longer. But again, all the numbers, and especially the, the station numbers frankly came out very, very quickly and still under review, quality control review in, in the company. That's why we put draft on everything at this point. So, but the concept is there, the availability is there. We provided an entrance for that. But we need to discuss it with Brightline and see what else in terms of the lengths of the platform.
Now, the 880, is that, would we be able to get a firm offer on that? Or that's just an estimate, or how?
That is, the way we do the estimate, we did sort of like bottom-up estimate, similar like contractors do. We calculate the labor, we calculate the material that goes in, we calculate the equipment that are being used or will be used. And we calculate all the potential costs associated with the subcontractor. For example, the electrical and the mechanical, the plumbing, the ventilation, all of those usually are those up. And we put the markup on those for the contractor, because always general contractor will have markup on them. And then we added the general contractor overhead and profit on top of that. And the numbers came out to be, as you can see, obviously, to the nearest dollar, but.
But that's not, that's not an unsolicited proposal. That's just an estimate at this time, right?
That, that is an estimate, engineer's estimate for the work. We used 33% for contingency on top of all the numbers that we came up with. And we added also the, what I call the soft costs, which are the engineering and the environmental construction management, you know, program management and so on. And those numbers are all there in the presentation.
Now, in order to accommodate Brightline, and again, just to go back to John. I can't, this, are you there? Are you there, John?
Well. You want to ask John questions?
No, 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 no. He had mentioned something, but I just, this is a.
Will you get on the stand, please?
We can't see each other anymore.
Yeah, was, yeah. Who are you asking?
We're like at a counter, at a, at a restaurant counter. We're not at the table anymore. The question had arisen about if we're gonna build a tunnel, we, if, at the final product, not just during construction, but the final product, if Brightline is gonna be going underneath the tunnel, too. I know you had mentioned during construction, they could, we're not gonna interrupt them. But the length of the tunnel, the length of the platform underground is 550. To have Brightline run under the tunnel would require somewhere in the neighborhood of 800 to 1,000 feet, subterranean. Is that, that's correct, right?
That is possible, obviously, and we will have to develop the configuration of that. The, if you remember from the profile, we have a flat area. Right after we come under the river and we are at 55 feet below the river, we continue almost flat at actually 0.5% of slope just to allow for drainage. And that is sufficient space to accommodate over 1,000 foot of platform if needed. Right now, we are carrying 500 foot, but it can be extended to 800 foot if needed.
You know about what the cost would be to extend it to 800 feet? That would add additional cost, right?
I don't know, we have to look into it. But most of the cost is gonna be in, in the excavation. So right now, what we have is a total of about, I remember it was about close to 300 million or so. I would say probably another 50 to 75 million dollars. But again, we have to run the numbers one more time, okay?
And thank you, thank you for doing the site visit. It actually was very, very helpful. And so the additional, the additional footage would be, it would start at the end of the platform and continue southbound towards the river.
Correct.
Correct. And there, there might be, would there need to be additional configuration of the Brightline station to accommodate that, too, or?
There would be, and this is, we provided already in that, in anticipation of something like that needed. We will have, from the south end of the existing Brightline platform, we will have direct connection to the platform, to the mezzanine, and from the mezzanine to the platform. So in a sense, there will be a connection, sort of like escalator, elevator going down from the end of their platform, okay? And that disruption will be during installation of those escalator, elevator, in a sense.
The other thing that was quite helpful, I mean, when we looked at the portals, I call them the entry and exit portals.
Put the mic a little closer to you.
The, the location of the portals, could you hear me now?
Yeah, I can hear you better now.
I'm not hearing myself very well. How about now?
Better.
Okay, feel like a commercial for Verizon or one of those. Could you hear me now? The location of the portals are in the existing right-of-way. We, we took the field trip, correct?
Yeah.
And the exit portals just as well, they're within the right-of-way already.
Well, all the work is within the railroad right-of-way, actually. The south portal, there will be two individual portals. In the north portal, both of them come together, the two tracks come together, and we'll have one wide portal accommodating two tracks. And that is on the west side.
On the north end, right, on the south side, okay. But no additional land is needed for the portals?
I'm sorry?
No additional land acquisition is needed for either portal, right?
No additional land acquisition at all. We are not, the, the only access is needed is for the station. And we assume the, the government center will be available and then to have the headhouse, where you'll have to buy the tickets and you go down and, you know, the vending machines, all of that stuff.
Once again, if you could let your colleagues know, I truly appreciate the time. It was very informative. Thank you so much for your presentation and spending time with us.
You're welcome. Anytime, as I mentioned earlier, if you would like to, for me to arrange a visit to Chinatown Station in San Francisco, I'd be glad to.
It doesn't take much to get you down from, up north, of wonderful weather. In a heartbeat, you come down here. Thank you again.
Okay, okay, thank you. Anyone else have any questions? Okay, we're good?
Thank you very much. I appreciate the presentation, the meeting today. And if there's no other question, I'm gonna head to the airport.
Well, it brought us closer, so thank you. And what was also good is the fact that we had the opportunity to meet with the county on, on Friday. And, and, you know, we'll continue to do that. And I appreciate all the work that you've done so far. And thank you, Ben, for everything you've done.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nazri. One moment. Okay, we're onto business five. Who will be making that presentation? I'll be right back.
Thank you. We're gonna go ahead with business five, please. Good afternoon, Vice Mayor.
Good afternoon.
Mister, I'm sorry. Good afternoon, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, Mr. City Manager, Mr. City Attorney, Mr. City Clerk. Portia Garcia with Development Services. And I have here with me Juan Rodriguez with Development Services. He's our Division Manager. We're here today to introduce to you all Fix-It FTL, which is our Q Alert replacement. So Fix-It FTL is a customer relationship management tool. We're going to be using this system to report non-emergency issues. And this would be used by our residents as well as by internal staff. With Fix-It FTL, our residents will be able to not only report their concerns, but also to track the progress of those concerns as they navigate our internal system. It's a very user-friendly and efficient platform for our service requests. And as I mentioned before, it is going to replace Q Alert. Ms. Garcia, could you hold one moment, please? I don't think the audience realized we can hear you all talking. It really carries. So if we could just bring it down a little bit, because we can hear your conversations. Thank you. So with Q Alert right now, it is also referred to as LotterServe. The Q Alert system is going to be active until September 30th of this year. However, with that system, the only thing that neighbors would be able to do is report anything dealing with utility billing. All other service request categories will be inactive. But we've already worked with Public Works to ensure that there is a message to the community that lets them know that they need to download Fix-It FTL from the App Store. We also have this week where we're working on Fix-It FTL. The app should be launching very soon in the App Store. However, the app is available if you would download C S E E. Click Fix from the App Store. You select Fort Lauderdale as the jurisdiction, and from there, you can actually input any type of service request. This is how the app will look, Fix-It FTL. It's going to be available for download for Apple and Android users. So from start to finish, the overall process for Fix-It FTL is that the neighbor would be able, or staff could go in, submit a service request. Once that service request is submitted into the system, it will route to the appropriate department. All of the service request categories are assigned to the staff that actually complete the work. Within the system, there's also built-in deadlines. And so if a service request is not completed or responded to within that built-in deadline, there's an escalation point built into the system. Once we received, we being the city staff, once we receive the service request, basically, we start working on resolving that request. Staff has the ability to do updates. If a user has his or her email address attached to the service request, the neighbor would automatically receive updates on that service request. Another feature that I would highlight that I really love about this system is that if there's a duplicate request that's submitted by multiple community members, which typically does happen, we would not have to update each individual request. Staff would combine all. Staff would combine all of those requests into one. And each time an update occurs to that primary request, all of the users who submitted the same request are updated. So I think that's a really cool feature. So step one, when you go into the app, you would select New Request, which is that bottom menu option. This is like the screenshot from a phone. So you would select New Request. Once you select New Request, you'll have an option to upload, upload a photo, to take a photo, or to get one from your gallery. A photo is not required, though. So if you have an item that it, it does not have a photo attached to it, you don't have to provide one. One unique feature with this is that the photo can be used to help identify the location of the request. The second step is that you get to provide an address. So there is a GIS feature in the system that if you're in the field and you're at the location, when you get to the screen, it automatically pulls up the address. But let's hypothetically say that you're uploading from somewhere else. You type your location into the top, it finds the map of where it is. A thing that I would highlight that happens in the background is, as you all know, the police districts are not currently aligned with the city commission districts. We have received the police layers. And so if a person has a service request that is in a police district, it picks that up and it, it syncs it with the police district commander. So I think that's really unique. Another thing that I would highlight is that some of our water accounts are not within the city boundaries. And so our GIS feature does cover accounts that are beyond the city boundaries. So our next screen that it would take us to is for the request category. So we have several departments throughout the cities. For example, we have Development Services Department that has service categories here. We also have Parks and Recreation. Public Works has a lot of their service categories here. Transportation and Mobility, the Police Department, the Fire Department, FXC Airport, you name it, it's here. Human Resources has internal categories for staff members to make requests through the system. The other thing that I would highlight is that the staff, Juan, Jennifer, Felicia, and a few others of us, we programmed all the categories here. I think that's a really cool thing, because in the future, as we modify our request categories and realize that there are things that are missing, we don't have to wait and go through anyone. We have the ability to actually go into the system, program it ourselves, and so we can make any changes to this app fairly quickly. The next step is, once you select the service category, you briefly describe whatever your concern is. Some of the categories do have follow-up questions that will be relevant to the staff that is going to respond to the request. Once you complete that step, you're at completion. This is a video, I don't see it playing, maybe I need to hit play. There it is. And it just shows really quickly how fast it is to submit a service request. Well, I won't delay our presentation. What I will say is this.
I have a Fix-It request? It works.
It is, it takes seconds, so let me attest to that.
How do I plug? How do I type that in?
I'm like, the technology is lacking, but the app works.
Just type in fix this.
Do you all have any questions of us?
I may have missed it in the presentation. Is it a free app?
It is.
It is free. Yes, okay, thank you.
It's to replace Lotter Serve.
Yes. But being that we have to go to the App Store to receive it.
Oh, right, right, right.
Yeah, so that's why.
It would be free to download.
That's my question. Thank you. You're sorry?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Vice Mayor, just wanted to add, you know, we, we greatly value our staff that, that brings this innovation, because what we want to do is improve our customer service, accountability, and promptness. And so, you know, we commend Portia that, you know, jumped into this role of leading with technology along with her, her staff. But I think that what this tool will do is it's going to give you data. It's going to help you understand, give you awareness about what's taking place around the community, so that that can help elected officials make long-term decisions, strategic decisions. So we look forward to having as many people as possible start using it and, and, and filling up with data, so that then this could be our, our basis or our baseline when you all do your budget reviews and recommendations for future years.
Portia, when's this going live?
So we have our soft launch today. We expect the, our version of the app to be available in the App Store this week. We're just waiting on activation, but you can begin using it today and see Click Fix. And as of this morning, our call center is actively using this app instead of using Q Alert.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions? All right, so what's the timeline as far as implementing this is concerned? Is it already, is it already hot?
It is. And tomorrow, staff can expect citywide to receive communication from Strategic Communications. And then we also have messaging going out on April 1st to the community.
All right, great. This would be great to kind of publicize amongst the visitors this spring, springbreakers and others, you know, people trying to answer, have answers to their questions. Okay, great, thank you so much. When, on the, my, my Bloomberg Harvard Philanthropies program, they, they talked about this, how this was like the next best thing to, you know, to, for cities to adopt. So I was very proud to say that we were already on the road to adopting it, and they were a little surprised that we were ahead of the game, so, so thank you.
Thank you all.
Great presentation, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, before we go to commission reports, Mr. City Manager, do you have any, anything you'd like to add to your, your follow-up action items?
No, no, no follow-ups.
All right, so we'll jump to our city commission reports. Commissioner Herbst?
Thank you, Mayor. So there is one item I'd like to bring up.
Is this show and tell?
It's, show and tell time. Thank you. Actually, no, I don't show and tell. I, I sit here and talk. So there are a number of parcels in the city that have.
Did you say potholes?
Parcels. There may be potholes too. And in fact, we have a number of dips along Bayview that, you know, I'd like to address, but that's a different question entirely. So we've got a number of parcels in the city. I believe there's about 12 that we've identified, where they have a street that runs past their house, and then we have a city seawall, and then we have a dock on the other side. So you're probably familiar with what we have along Cordova, where the upland property owners have the ability to have a dock on the city seawall. There are some other parcels around the city that are similarly situated. The only difference there is by virtue of being on like a finger aisle, they also have a dock on the other side of the house. So what we've got is folks that have had dock permits for these properties going back for decades. But right now, we have a situation where I understand that in 2025, they're no longer going to be able to do that. And so I'd like for us to go back and take a look at that. You know, this is again, a longstanding policy of the city to permit the upland property owners to have docks. And again, we, we have similarly situated properties along Cordova where we're doing that. But we've got these other parcels here where it says that, that they're allowed to get a permit for the upland parcels, and they will have riparian rights relative thereto until July 2025. Or after such date that the city raises a seawall with municipal funds, whichever is first. Anyway, I'd like us to go back and take a look at this and, and make it such that we are consistent with the other property owners in the city. I don't think we should have a termination date of 2025 on this. So I'd, I'd like us to take a look at this. Again, this affects a, a number of different areas. There's folks that I've heard from down in, along the aisles. There's folks down in Rio Vista. There's folks up in, up in Bay Colony. So this is not just a district-specific issue. Like I said, there's a number of parcels throughout the city that are similarly situated. I've heard from a number of property owners that are interested in having the city take a look at this, so.
So are they separated by, you mentioned Cordova as an example. Are they separated by a roadway?
That is correct. They're separate, so again, these are some of the, the more narrow.
Finger aisles?
Finger aisles, where you will have essentially water, the parcel for the house, the roadway, and a seawall. So unlike some of these other ones, where you'll have a roadway down the middle and you've got properties on both sides of the street, in this case, they only have one roadway, they, only, only one set of properties, because they're not wide enough to have properties on both sides. So what they have now currently is by, by virtue of that, they're able to have a dock immediately adjacent to their property, but they've also had the ability to have a second dock on the other side.
Across.
Right. And, and so what, what we want to do is be able to preserve the opportunity for them to do that. Again, it's not a lot of parcels, but again, it's just recognizing that, you know, if we are affording property owners who are upland from being able to do that, I think we need to be consistent in how we treat folks, that's all.
Are they currently being used as public access? Or are they, are they privately? I mean, the, the, the wall is the city wall, correct?
Right, that would be a city seawall. So similar, again, similar to what we have along Cordova, where everybody, anybody on the, you know, from the, from the public can access that area. I would, I would suggest that, again, we just do it consistent with what we've got along Cordova. So if we have public access there, then we should have public access along these.
Okay. Anyone have any questions?
Well, yeah, I have, it's funny you should say that, because I, the same thing's happened. You mentioned Cordova, but there's our, in, in my district, there's a couple that have the exact same thing. And they're across the street from what they've historically had been able to have docks based on the seawall. And I do want to echo what Commissioner Herbst says, that we need to be consistent. What we've done on Cordova, we should extend for anybody that's in the exact same scenario.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Does that complete your presentation?
That is it. So I'd like to ask staff to bring back to the city attorney's office and to the city manager's office, just a, a proposed change to the ULDR, section 8-144, private use of public property of budding waterways, in order to eliminate that, that deadline of July of 2025.
Okay, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. The report I'm going to give, I'm going to condense it a little bit. Really want to give great highlight on Friday. February 23rd, I met with a gentleman, Mr. Gregory Scott, who is bringing a proposal to the city regarding Oceans of Soul. He brought information about this event that he would like to have on that beach in the month of November, understanding that there was a, a meeting that has occurred already, including the BBI and Harbor Beach HOA president as well. Hoping that this is a opportunity for our city to introduce also an additional event to our beautiful beachway, given an opportunity to bring additional entertainment as well. On Saturday, the 24th, was the Six Trunk Festival and Parade, which turned out to be a wonderful event. I want to give great shout-out to Parks and Recs for their hands on this organizing and making everything run smoothly, smoothly, along with our police and our fire department, always doing an amazing job. And I thank you for doing that. Our mayor was with us, we marched, well, he marched. My, my knee is still under therapy, so.
You watched him march.
I, I, but I was in the Jeep with the fire department. So I was along the route, giving my waves and shout-out. But it was a great day, the weather held up. There were some concerns early that it may have rained, but it did not. It, it did. It was, turned out to be a beautiful day. And also, our headliner this year was a 90s R&B entertainer by the name of Michelle Lake, and the crowd really enjoyed the day overall. Great entertainment, local and nationally. I'm looking forward to making plans for next year. So thank you again, Parks and Recs and all of those who had their hands with organizing this, along with the Six Trunk Festival organization. On Tuesday, February 22nd, I had the pleasure of meeting with the friends and, the friends and families of the Carlton Be More Day organization. We met with both Carl Williams and Ben Rogers. We talked about preparing and getting that event ready for later part of this year, which is October. We talked about, in their request, they're asking if the city would, we talked about sponsorship versus partnership. And they are asking if the city would have a discussion and move in the direction of doing a partnership. And I am in support of that, so I would like to have that conversation with city manager and commissioner as well. And as we know, that Carlton Moore was a commissioner here in our city. And it's, it's my understanding, recognized as the longest sitting commissioner on the dais. So it would be a great honor for us to.
I don't, I don't, I don't, it's a good question. I don't know whether Jim Nogal was the longest or, or Carlton.
We, it's.
He's the longest-serving mayor, Jim is.
He was mayor, well, certainly Carlton served, I think, 20 years on the commission.
Yes, so that we can verify the numbers, but he has.
Can we ever do something to, can we finally do something to honor Carlton?
That's the point.
That's the point.
That's the point. That's the conversation. That's the conversation I want us to have, and then secure it, activate, and, you know, make this happen. It's been a long time. It is time, okay? So I would love for us to have that discussion and just highlighting some of the accomplishments and what they share and provide that day of the Carlton Be More Day, when they have that festival. We hold it at Oswald Park. They provide breast cancer screenings, voter registration, first-time homeowners buy your workshops. Broward College Band is usually there. The NAACP is there, a Barber's Academy. And just conversation, reminding all of us the importance of participating in jury duty. So it's not only a day remembering Carlton, but all the things that he stood for. So this is a way to make sure his legacy continues. Also, on that day, I had a great conversation with Edwin Govman. And it was regarding the Alcee Hastings Broward Black Jewish Alliance. They explained to me how Mr. Hastings' organization is still in effect and hoping to build a relationship to continue that, that organization in not only the district, but in the city overall. So that was a great conversation. I really enjoyed it. On Thursday, the 29th, we, I had a conversation with some members from the YMCA. And they were specifically asking about a summer educational grant that had been awarded to the Y in years past. And I'm, I didn't get a chance to really talk to city manager about it, but I'm wondering if it's the same grant that we're going to be talking about later in the conference meeting. But they had been an awardee of the grant, and they wanted to be considered again for that particular grant. And before, they were dealing, uh, working with Zoe. And we know Zoe's no longer with us, so not knowing exactly what the path is. So we would like to get clarity on that. Also. The date of, also Thursday, the 29th, had the pleasure of attending the ribbon cutting at the Ellie Lee YMCA in Mizel Center. Five new businesses. We actually opened the doors for them. Our new police station, The Salad Boss Restaurant, Natural Trends Setters, which is a hair salon, Holy Cross Health, and then Optimal Health Pharmacy. It was a great turnout. The community is really excited for what has. great turnout. The community is really excited for what has been open and, and, and now is available to the community. Mayor, you have often said, and I believe, well, all of us have, we are witnessing our buildings going up that are considered mixed use, and we have these open space bays for businesses, and they're not necessarily being filled. We're not filling up. So to have on the Six Trunk Court on Six Trunk Boulevard, all five bays filled, we are really excited about it. So kudos and shout out to the CRA and all of those who, who work so diligent to make sure we fill those particular bays. Also on, that was Friday, May first, I was able to have a tour at the Jack and Jill Educational Center. Great facility. I had been there before the pandemic, and now that they're open with the complete educational center going up to grade five. And they wanted to reach out to see how they could be more involved within District Three. So that was a great conversation, and I was really, really excited about the conversation because there's times when we go and there's things that the individuals that you're visiting with, they have a checklist of things that they want. But this was an opportunity where they were saying they wanted to work within the district. They wanted that opportunity to make that come forward. So we look forward to working with Jack and Jill Academy. Also, on March first, was the Employee Appreciation Day. City Manager and Neighborhood Support, that was a great event. The food was amazing. If you missed it, you missed a really good treat. Y'all have to know I'm a foodie, so if you don't know that, I have to put that out there. The mayor and I were there, and we had the privilege, along with HR, Jerome, we, we acknowledged those employees who had been service awards for five, ten, twenty-five, and thirty years plus. And that was amazing to see the smiles on their faces, to shake their hands, and be able to tell them thank you for their service. And again, thank you to all of you who were recognized for your years of service. Also, on March second, which was a Saturday, for, a front porch roll call was hosted in the Rock Island community. The HOA, one of the neighbors, Mr. Rucker, they opened their home, and District Two Police were able to come out, meet the neighbors, share some input. They were able to give dialogue on things that they were witnessing, the neighbors, what they would like to see changed. And then also giving our police force gratitude and thank you for the services that they are rendering in our communities. It was well-attended, and we really appreciate our police supporting and coming out to be a part of that. Last evening, I had my pre-agenda meeting at Carter Park. Great attendance. We, of course, we went over the agenda for the day. Great opportunity. Also, upcoming events. I'll be traveling to DC to partake in the National League of Cities. That's March tenth through the fourteenth. I'm looking forward to this opportunity again. Always great knowledge, great opportunities to talk with other commissioners.
Is it midterm, mid-year?
Yeah, this is mid-year. So this is one that we, last year, it was the first opportunity that I had to go to one of these conferences, and we learned about Great Jobs, Great Cities. And we were able to bring that back. And we were selected as a city to be a part of that academy, and we're rolling that forward. And I'm looking forward to learning something and seeing what else we can bring back. On Saturday, March twenty-third, our police department at Riverland Community Center, we're having a community egg hunt. Looking forward to that. That's from ten AM to one PM. On Friday, April the twelfth, putting this out there now so we can start talking about it, is the Friday Night Musicals that is held at Riverland Park, and that's from seven to ten PM. Latin band, Latin music, great opportunity to come out and get your sauce on, have a little fun. And Friday, May nineteenth, is our Carter Park Jams at Carter Park, also from seven to ten. And then, great, great, great news as well, April twenty-fifth through the twenty-eighth, the Old Dillard Museum having its centennial anniversary celebration. This is marking Dillard High School in the city of Fort Lauderdale for one hundred years. So there will be a tour of the museum on the Thursday. Friday, there's a meeting Greek. Saturday, there's a great celebration at Oswald Park. And then also on that Sunday, there will be a worship service at New Hope, I'm sorry, at Mount Olive Baptist Church. And there was one other thing I wanted to just bring to our attention, to add to what I would like us to look over and consider getting more information about. I did have a meeting with Mr. Mason from Aflac, along with Heidi Richardson, Kristo Wagner. Mr. Mason's name is Tara Mason, I'm sorry. Aflac has a workforce and economic development program. Their mission is to employ, educate, and empower young entrepreneurs through a twenty-six-week career readiness program. And what it's designed to do is also address health gaps and also address wealth gaps in our communities, the underserved communities. So I would love to be able to bring that full circle with city manager and the commission. Always looking for an opportunity to, you know, that gap that's there, let's begin to close it in, where we're bringing economic development and economic opportunities where citywide, we are benefiting and growing together. That's all that I have. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. Been a busy couple of weeks.
Productive.
Yes. Commissioner Glassman.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Wednesday, February twenty-one, the International Swimming Hall of Fame Board of Directors had an all-day retreat, and I was able to attend for a good portion of that. It was quite interesting and very educational. That evening, the Flagler Village Civic Association Board held its meeting. That is a new board, and they've really hit the ground running, and I did want to congratulate them for being so organized and just very much on top of everything, and look forward to some good things with their leadership in that neighborhood. Thursday, February twenty-second, was the Central Beach Alliance meeting. Saturday, February twenty-fourth, attended the Stonewall National Museum and Libraries Standing on the Shoulders of Heroes Gala. And two of the honorees were Diana Nyad and also Stacy Ritter. That was a well-attended event and very inspirational. Tuesday, February twenty-seventh, South Middle River Civic Association met. Wednesday, February twenty-eighth, Middle River Terrace Association met. Yesterday, Monday, March fourth, I had the pleasure of actually attending a conference on the beach at the Ritz-Carlton Hotel. I've actually attended this every single year since two thousand eighteen. The ULI does an amazing job bringing people in from all around the country. And yesterday was their twenty-twenty-four Fort Lauderdale Real Estate and Investment Forum. What I find fascinating and why I go every year, it's very interesting to hear perspectives of people that don't necessarily live in our city, but they invest in our city. And you get to hear the impressions that these folks have from all around the United States when they come and they do these panels. And the panels are always very informative, very interesting. They had about four hundred people in attendance.
I've heard it was very well-attended.
The largest crowd they've ever had. Four hundred people packed the ballroom at the Ritz-Carlton yesterday. And every type of topic that you can think of, you had financial institutions there, whether it was banking or other lending institutions. You had development teams. You, you heard about the latest trends and what's happening in our city, in our downtown, you know, opportunities, what's gonna be looking at in the future, in the next couple of years. Again, I, I find it fascinating. The hours just tick by. The whole day really flies. And again, what is so interesting to hear, because sometimes, you know, we're in our own little bubble here in Fort Lauderdale, and we sometimes hear very much the same voices all of the time. And not that that's a bad thing, but I think once in a while, it's good to get outside of that bubble, to hear, again, these views, these perspectives, these predictions for our city. It's really, it, it's very eye-opening and very encouraging because what I will tell you, what I heard yesterday all day, is nothing but positivity. Positivity for what Fort Lauderdale is going to be in the future, Fort Lauderdale, what it is today, what makes it tick, and why these people are so bullish on our city. It's, I, I just wanted to say.
The Wall Street Journal says we're a cool city.
I'm gonna get to that, actually. I'm gonna get to that in a second. I'm gonna get to that. It's in my report. But again, very positive. Thank you for, to the Downtown Development Authority for working with the Urban Land Institute and putting this program together yesterday, as they do every year. And I do find it very stimulating, very interesting, and just a really good look from the outside of the way people view our cities. So I just wanted to mention that attendance yesterday. Coming up, tomorrow evening, March sixth, Victoria Park Civic Association will be meeting. Also tomorrow evening, we have the renaming, the secondary name, I should say, of Northeast Thirty-Fifth Street between, by A1A, that's gonna be called Chabad Drive. So that is tomorrow, tomorrow evening. Thursday, March seventh, I will attend the Marine Advisory Board, just to say hello, to have a little bit of conversation, and looking forward to that. Coming up, we've been promoting this in our district newsletters. This is a very important, again, Urban Land Institute is hosting a technical advisory panel on policies for road elevation. This has been a hot topic in certain parts of my district and also throughout the city. I'm looking forward to that. Public Works Department has engaged the Urban Land Institute to convene an advisory panel of national experts. They'll be here. They'll be at the Museum of Discovery and Science. I'll be attending on Monday, March eleventh, when we'll kick off with a public listening session, which should be quite interesting. And then I'll also attend on March fourteenth, when all of the findings will be presented from those workshops. So that's gonna be very important. Again, technical advisory panel from the Urban Land Institute on policies for road elevation. Just a couple of comments, Mayor, you did mention, and I did want to also reiterate, yes, Wall Street Journal, the article was called Wait, Is Fort Lauderdale Cool, a Traveler's Guide? Again, very positive. This has been getting a lot of attention and press, not just in our city, although I haven't seen an editorial like that from the Sun Sentinel about how cool our city is, but maybe that's coming soon. But I will say that people are noticing Fort Lauderdale from around the country, and this is just another example from the Wall Street Journal, really talking about how our city has gained so much attention in a positive way, why people are coming here, and then also talking about the new demographic, not just the travelers, but people living here. I see it all the time, especially in parts of the district around Flagler Village, the, the youth. And that was also brought up yesterday in the ULI meeting. They talked about an interesting perspective of how they measure things based on how many fifth graders, I don't know why, fifth graders, but, fifth graders are in a city. And, and they talk about things like that because it shows how, you know, families are changing, how a demographic for the city is changing. Again, a really cool article in the Wall Street Journal about why Fort Lauderdale is, is so cool. I did want to also mention to the city manager, very, actually hardly any at all complaints about the Bad Boys Four filming on the beach last Monday. But again, people are asking for a little bit more help with traffic, especially around La Solas and Seabreeze, near where the Quarter Deck Restaurant is, city manager. Whenever we have events, whenever we close streets, whenever we do anything on the barrier island, if we could just get a little bit more help, especially around that intersection, because right there, across the street from the La Solas Oceanside Park, is a real heavy-duty convergence of pedestrian traffic, vehicular traffic, people looking to see how they can maneuver in and out of the barrier island, especially by the La Solas Bridge. So we just need to pay a little bit more attention to that. Other than that, I did want to just mention, I read today, city manager, maybe if you could tell us, I read today that the governor is assigning troopers to various cities throughout the state for spring break. I didn't know if, it did mention Fort Lauderdale, but maybe if you could tell us what kind of assistance or what kind of numbers we'll be expecting. By the way, I've been driving up and down A1A a lot the last few days and speaking to folks. I think people are so well-behaved. I think that basically, we have such a good crowd. I want to thank the police. I, I love the fact that the presence is all over the barrier island, especially with those little canopies on the, on the beach itself, on the sand, so that it's very identifiable. Everyone is doing a great job. Thank you. Thank you, Chief, for that. Also, fire, thank you for that. And just everyone is really prepared. But again, the crowds have been big, but just so well behaved. So I just wanted to mention that as well.
Yeah, Chief Schultz will provide information about what you probably saw on the news article.
That was just a general, I'm sorry, Chief Schultz, Police Department. That was just a general output from Tallahassee for statewide. Any city that borders water, they offered assistance. They are primarily in Miami Beach. We did tell them that they are welcome to assist with our upcoming DUI checkpoints, and they're certainly welcome to run traffic enforcement on their state roads at any time. But there's no specific number that they're giving.
Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
And again, thank you to all of our first responders for doing such a great job during this time. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much, Commissioner. Commissioner Sturman.
I have a few things I'd like to talk about. I think Chris, are you here, Chris Cooper? No, don't have to come up. Just stand up and wave for a minute. I am gonna, I'm gonna call you twice in my report, but I'm gonna start with the first one. I want to thank you for something, and I'm gonna ask for some assistance from the city manager about this. I met with Breakwater Surf Club, and I want to thank you for their unique situation that they had there. It might come before the city commission, so I'm just giving you guys a heads up. Everybody loves to have sidewalks. They're a unique little community that does not have sidewalks, as you well know, Mr. Cooper. And there's two new properties coming on that mandating sidewalks, which would be detrimental to the community. I, I want to thank you for working them through the system, helping them out to navigate it. And just to give a heads up, we've spoken about this also, Greg. At some point, if it is a problem, they might need legislative relief. We might need to amend our ordinance in order to, for properties, for communities like that where it's not appropriate, whatever we need to do to help Breakwater Surf Club. Just let me know, and we'll take care of it from there, okay? Number two, I want to thank everybody that participated in the, our vacation rental emergency meeting that we had. We had a Zoom meeting. Is Daphne here by any chance? I didn't see her in the audience.
She's in town.
She's in town. Well, I mean, if you could give us an update when I'm done about what's going on with vacation rentals. But I did speak to her as soon as we found out about it. It was about, actually, over a week ago. I know the Senate has passed their version, and the House is taking it up supposedly either today, I think tomorrow. And at the last minute, Daphne was able to help us. We had a Zoom with well over forty, fifty participants. I want to publicly thank our representative, Darrell Campbell, who was on with us, Representative Chip Lamarker, who I've spoken to numerous times in Tallahassee, our lobbyist, as well as Daphne, who's taken this very serious issue up. And they might or might not be voting on it with the next day or two, but hopefully the clock will run out and we could preserve our vacation rentals for our community. It's very concerning to us. Number, next one, Anthony, you're not out of the loop. Stand up just for a second and wave, physical wave. I want to thank you. We had our workshop on the noise ordinance coming down the pike, and you've, you've done a few things. You've taken myself and my staff, given us a quick update. You've given us an overview, a historical perspective. And then we've had a workshop in the community that was very well-attended about what the history of, of the noise ordinance is, the problem, and going forward, what to expect with the noise ordinance. Chris, I told you'd be back. Again, just wave one more time. Again, the same thing with you. You've prepared our staff and myself very well, giving us a tutorial. And we had the noise ordinance over in DSD. I want to thank you, hmm? Tree ordinance, yeah, noise, noise and tree, yeah. Those noise, those trees are very noisy, aren't they? The tree ordinance and the tree canopy, something that I think is very dear to my heart. And thank you for taking the lead on that. thank you for taking the lead on that and working with us. That was a very successful workshop. The last couple of things, I am going, going forward, I am gonna be having another bicycle ride. We have one a month in March. It was a short month, I'm gonna be leaving town, but look forward to it in April. And my staff is gonna kill me because it's a secret, but I will mention just briefly, our next workshop is going to be on hurricane preparedness. Is that cor- oh. So we're shooting for next month, the next month or so, having maybe in May, one on hurricane preparedness. And one last thing that I'm shocked that nobody mentioned, I'm usually not the best, there's a little gathering, it was in March 16th, is that correct, Mr. Mayor? A little parade coming to town?
What about March 16th?
Parade coming to town?
I think it's March 15th. One five.
Well, that'll be Friday, but I think it'll be on Saturday.
Is it Friday?
Yeah, 16th.
Hold on, I'm sorry.
Is that the day of the St. Patrick's Day Parade?
There's a striping at the-
I'm sorry, it is the 16th, you're correct.
Okay, the St. Patrick's Day Parade, and I'll let you-
My notes are incorrect.
And Mr. Mayor, I'll let you-
Wait a minute, but let me, but on the 15th, we do the street striping.
Okay.
So I'll be talking about that.
Okay, so know what, I'll defer to you on that, but that is the end of my report. Thank you.
Are we done? You all done?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, great.
I am done, thank you.
Okay, no problem. Okay. Hold on. That's, that's 4:30. Okay. It's been a busy couple of weeks. First of all, I want to thank all the folks that are here in town for spring break. Hope you have a great time. Thank you for bringing your enthusiasm with you, but please make sure you leave with your dignity. And we're, and we're hoping that there's room for everyone to share what we all have to offer here in Fort Lauderdale. So on February 22nd, I did a runway show for the United Way. This was, this was at the Galleria, and it was an interesting show, but anyway, I took one for the team. The next day, we had a very nice meeting with the Dutch consulate. They had a trade delegation, and we met and talked about economic opportunities between our two, our two communities. It was a very nice presentation that they made, and I want to thank the Greater Fort Lauderdale Alliance for hosting that event. And next time, I hope we can get more business people involved because it was really a great education for everyone that attended. On that same evening, I attended the La Solas Chabad IDF Veterans Dinner. A number of members of the Israeli Army, former members of the Israeli Army came to Fort Lauderdale, and they discussed opportunities for disabled veterans from the IDF on how to rehabilitate back into society. And it was a great turnout in the, in the community, about 120 people attended. Of course, the Sistrunk Parade and Festival was great, great day, great turnout, a lot of enthusiasm from the community, we're very happy to see that. Also attended the, that evening, the Stonewall Library Annual Dinner. The Commissioner Glassman was there, and Commissioner Sturman was there. We presented, I don't know, we sort of unveiled something that night, right?
I don't know what that was.
Yeah. But thank you, you know, thank you for both attending. The next day, I was, did the opening of the South Florida Athletic Association softball games. They had their, their weekend tournament here in Fort Lauderdale, so that was a great opportunity to see a lot of folks come to our city and play softball. On the 28th, I did welcome remarks to United Way's National Addiction Solutions Summit. This is an annual event. The room at the Riverside Hotel was completely filled with, with medical professionals, and very happy to hear that we're continuing to discuss best solutions on addiction treatments. You know about the Employee Appreciation Event, that was great. Hundreds and hundreds of our employees came out, very proud of all of them, and thank you for all the work that you do to make our community the best place that it is. You heard about the tour of the Miami Tunnel. Very appreciative of Mr. Hodgkins for inviting us there and opening, opening his tunnel for us, but I do recommend that anyone else have that opportunity, please go ahead and see it. March 2nd, I attended a banquet for the Bose Arts Foundation, which is connected with the NSU Art Museum. They honored George Hanbury. I guess that's gonna be the first of many honorary events, considering Mr. Hanbury is gonna be retiring in January of next year. So he's a great leader and role model in our community, and was very proud to be able to represent the city at that event. As Commissioner Glassman mentioned, the Chabad Lubavitch in the Golf Mile is gonna be doing a street naming, that'll be at 5:30. Hope, and all, all of you can attend, or at least as many as possible. And I think it's finally a recognition of the community to be able to, to show that they have a place here in Fort Lauderdale, and certainly, they have been located at that site for many, many years. On March 8th, Pama Tavern is opening, that's at 551 North Federal Highway. They're having a grand opening at 4:00 PM. I guess, are they taking over like a pub that was there? What was there?
I think that's the Breast Tap. It used to be the Breast Tap, and now, yeah, that's-
Oh, it's trying to crush you, yeah. It was a pub, yeah, right.
Yeah, and that's Friday at 4:00.
Yeah, Friday at 4:00.
Right.
And McSorley's over on the beach, they got new management, and they're gonna have a ribbon cutting on March 9th at 4:00 PM. Lot of drinking opportunities in your district, Commissioner.
I'll be there, actually, I didn't mention those because I figured you might, but I'll be there, and yeah, we'll have a couple.
Okay. Try to hold back. That evening, March 9th, is the Diversity Honors Award at the Hard Rock Casino. This is gonna be hosted by, by the, by the Hard Rock Casino, and it's an annual event. I'll be presenting a proclamation to one of the honorees, and again, happy to represent the city at this event. The next day, I'll be in Miami, attending the Climate Mayor's Reception at the, at the W South Beach. Again, an opportunity to present our perspectives on climate change and resiliency best practices. March 12th, I'll be speaking at the Biz Now Forum at the Marriott Harbor Beach at 8:00 AM. How did I agree to that? March, that same day, I'll be speaking at the Tower Club, the Women in Real Estate Leadership Forum, that's at noon, again, at the Tower Club. The 13th, Neucha McCormick is going to be hosting a fundraiser for the Thomas McCormick Scholarship Fund, that's at 5:30 PM at the Thauso's Restaurant. And on March 14th, and I hope everyone from the commission can participate in this, is the Downtowner of the Year event, and we'll be honoring Bill Walker from the Water Taxi, that's at 11:30 AM at the First Baptist Church. Again, that's March 14th, and that's at 11:00 AM, it's a luncheon. So Bill Walker, amazing member of our community and contributor, just generous and just all around nice guy, just very, very honored to be part of that celebration. And that evening, I will be visit, I'll be having dinner with a visiting Czech delegation, talking about economic opportunities between our two communities. And March 15th, the next day, we're gonna be having the striping at St. Patrick's, for St. Patrick's Day, that's gonna be at 4:30, and I believe it's at the Tunneltop Park, right? So all come there, we'll each have an opportunity to paint a part of the green stripe, that's been our tradition over the last number of years. And then, of course, the next day is the St. Patrick's Day Parade. There's a, there's a reception at 10:00 AM, 10:00 AM, I believe, at YOLO, and then the parade kicks off at noon. That evening, I'll be attending at the Hilton Marina, the 50th anniversary of the independence of Grenada from that dastardly mother's country, Great Britain. So 50 years of independence, and we're all invited to come if you'd like to attend, should be a great celebration. And then finally, March 20th, I know it's, there'll be another meeting between now and then, but I just would like everyone to put this on their calendar. The Panther Organization is going to have the cutting of the ice at the War Memorial Site in Holiday Park. That's at, that's at 3:00 in the afternoon, and the game is at 6:00.
What date, what's the date on that?
March 20th. It's the day after our next meeting. And so let me also take this opportunity to rep, to recognize some more people who are retiring. Christopher Billinger in Fire Rescue, 22 years, congratulations. Christopher Askervold, Captain in Fire Rescue, 30 years. Gregory Schutzer, Captain in Fire Rescue, 26 years. Paul Gilbert, firefighter, paramedic, Fire, in Fire Rescue, 24 years. Is there gonna be anybody left for you? Commissioner Glassman, there's an opportunity for you.
I have enough to do, but thank you, man.
I know how you want to ride one of those hook and ladder trucks all your life.
It's okay, thank you, man.
We're getting the oxygen tanks this afternoon, if that helps.
Richard Thorpe, also a firefighter, been with us 30 years, congratulations, thank you for your service. Valerie Floristall, who has been a Business Operations Manager, she's been with us 20 years. And Ludovic Novellas, Facilities Worker in Parks and Recs, 17 years. And James Crawford, Environment Works, he's been with us for 27 years. So I want to thank all of you. Your gold watches will be sent to you in the mail, so, but thank you for your commitment to our community and for helping to make Fort Lauderdale the great city that we continue to be honored with. So that's it for me. Mr. City Manager, do you have any reports?
Yes, Mayor. Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Commissioners. So we welcome you to our new place to meet, and we still have certain items and logistics that we need to work out. This is our first day here. We're certainly gonna take advantage of some of the speaker systems that we have in this auditorium, but we thank you for your patience. Next meeting, we'll have a different setup, a lot better. We also continue to work with Barrett Health on Dottie Mancini Park. Again, proposal to lease the parcel has been offered to their leadership, and this will allow us to grant public access to the parcel as a park. And we're also working on a long-term solution that we hope to get resolved and bring forth for you all to consider and approve. Again, thank you for those that made it to our second annual Employee Appreciation Day March 1st. The pictures are available online, and certainly, staff was very appreciative of you all being there. Kudos to Amber Cabrera for leading the planning and delivering this great luncheon and ceremony. Also want to highlight that FTL Connect, your key to the city, the Cities Magazine that lets everyone know about what we're doing, where we're going, and, and that's gonna be arriving in the mail this week, and, or at latest next. We also want to give a shout out to all the professional female staff because it is International Women's Month. We're recognizing our women leaders and showcasing their stories on social media, media, so be sure to look out for those and like it and share it. Wanted, wanted to also resonate what Commissioner Glassman was saying about the ULI conference yesterday. I was able to participate as a panel facilitator, and I wanted just to share that a lot of the panel members and even attendees gave great kudos to you all, city administration staff. They mentioned that Fort Lauderdale is very easy to work with, they have a warm welcome, and they appreciate that from the city. So just wanted to share that. I've also been invited to the Large Cities Executive Forum because we're one of the top 25 metros in the United States. I'll be attending that April 11th through 13th. Wanted to give an update from Daphne from Tallahassee. She's saying that several amendments have been filed, and this is about the vacation rental. One amendment by Representative Fine will remove preemption, and this is something that we support, but however, we don't know if it will pass, and we are whipping votes. That's what she mentioned. So she will give you a report later on today, but just wanted to give you, keep you updated on that. I also will be out of the office starting from tonight until Sunday. I regret to say that this evening I will not be able to, to lead this meeting. Susan Grant will be stepping in for me, I have to take care of certain matters, and will be out, and she will be acting. And those are my comments. We are FTL.
Mr. City Man, could you have Daphne just contact me about that vacation rental, whenever she knows? That'd be great.
Okay, she will.
Thank you.
Has it, but it has, it's still in flux, isn't it?
I know, the question is, will the amendments go through? Will it die? Well, no, and it has to go back to the House if they pass the amendment, but they might be able to run the clock out, that's the big issue.
Right, didn't she just send us an email, though, today on this?
Right, but the question is, what's gonna happen with those amendments today? And I am curious how that, that pans out.
All right, well, do you have her cell number?
Yeah, I did, but he might, yeah, I do, I do.
Okay.
City Manager, I have a request. If we could get the breakdown for the additional incidentals for using this facility?
Oh, yeah, we actually sent that, I believe, during the middle of this meeting.
Okay.
So you have that in hand.
If you could, because-
And Laura can explain that right now, if you'd like.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commission, Laura Reese. So again, just to remind you, the use of this auditorium was previously just one time a year as part of our participation agreement. This year, we asked to have it unlimited a number of times for the commission meetings. So we've included all the dates of the commission meetings, so you all are accessing this at no cost to the city. The city does pay for costs associated with janitorial services and security. The estimated amount for this meeting is $1,000. So it's, that's about the cost, each meeting will be around $1,000. In addition, there were some startup costs to make sure our technology worked, and that was around $9,000. And I sent you the backup in an email today as well. Any other questions?
Laura, is there a possibility that, I've just been getting some requests that support staff might just have some place where maybe they can charge phones or laptops, or there's really no place to do anything? There's no place to work, or there's no place to just be here and, and have any kind of charging capabilities?
Commissioner Glassman, we actually noted certain things that we're gonna make adjustments to. We're gonna be putting tables here in the front row. We're gonna set up these front rows as working areas for staff, and we'll have those chargers here. We're also gonna pull back the podium so that you have better access. We're gonna bring down this camera and have better sound. If there are any other things that we need to work on, please let us know, because we want to set this up so that you can all conduct business easily and seamlessly.
That'd be great, and we'd like to also say thank you to the museum and Bonnie Clearwater for doing this, and I know that it's a little bit of a, little bit of a strain, I'm sure, for them, they're not used to this, and so I wanted to say thank you to her and to her staff as well. Thank you.
And one other thing, Laura, before you leave, I, I don't see the email, but I'll look at it later. One of the things I did inquire about, because it was said we would be responsible for security, is there an amount that we are paying for security? Because my discussion before, we have our police here, so are we paying for our officers and then additional security?
Yes, so that there is security, and that is part of that $1,000 per meeting, and it's to ensure museum property security. I can share more on what that includes, but it's outside of, outside of our security. They need to make sure for insurance purposes that after hours, their resources are also secure. They wouldn't typically have that after hours.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mayor, if I may, I have a request for an executive closed-door session, if I could read it? I need to announce a closing.
I didn't hear you.
Can you, I need to request an executive closed-door session? Can you hear me?
Is there a closed door?
No, no, I'm announcing one for next, next meeting.
Oh, yeah, 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 we're not there yet. All right. City Manager, are you concluded?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, and John, did you want to say anything?
Actually, before, Tom, before you get into it, so Greg, could you just go back and refresh that conversation about Dottie Mancini Park and what our status is on that right now? Important that I think the community understands, because I get phone calls- Important that I think the community understands, because I get phone calls and emails on this on a regular basis and, and so I think we need a little bit more robust discussion about that, if, if you would cover it, please. Thank you. Sure, Commissioner. So as you know, about three weeks ago, we provided a proposal to Broward Health to lease the parcel on a short-term basis until we have a long-term basis plan resolved. The short-term, we wanted to lease the park for a year or less at $24,000 or close to $24,000 a month. That is the value that Broward Health said their appraisal gave. And so we wanted to match that. They took, took the proposal and since then, they have been reviewing that with their legal staff. And so we await for that response so that then our legal side can review and we can execute. As you know, Commissioner, I have the authority to, to lease something for less than a year. And so that's, again, our short-term approach. Long-term, we're looking at other locations that can outfit Broward Health for their mission of expansion, healthcare access. If we can find another location within the city, that would certainly be further negotiated with Dottie Mancini so that we can have it as we had before at a much lower cost. We had it at a dollar a year for many years. So I'm sorry, you said they've had that now for three weeks, reviewing our offer? They've had it for some time. If you give me a minute, I can tell you when we provided that to, that was on, actually, that was on January 26th, 2024. January 26th and now we're into March. Do we have any idea what the holdup is? Is there anything that is unusually complex about the offer? I mean, we, we've had a lease with Dottie Mancini Park for what, 25 years? Yes, around that time. So it had, other than our offering them, how much money? Our offer stands at yearly value of $290,433. Okay, so we're going from $1 to $240,000, but anything else in the lease terms changing other than us giving them substantially more money than we've paid them in the past? No, there's ample language there that if at any time they would want to stop or we want to stop, we can get out of that commitment. So do we have any idea then, why it's taken them over a month at this point? At this point, right now, we, we don't have any, any specifics. Again, earlier, I, I did reach out to their leadership to find out if there was any status update and they said they're, they're working on it and we hope to get an answer soon. Okay. When, when we look to find an alternative location for them, are we going to be looking at, you know, charging them a couple hundred thousand dollars a year potentially in rent? So certainly we would, we would negotiate something that counters the value that we're paying right now so that we could have equity in the transaction. And certainly, we would get feedback from the members of the commission to see what that value will look like. But again, there's a lot of discussions with another party, a third party in this and until we get any firm traction, I wouldn't want to present that to you all yet. Thank you, Greg. I, I know you're working exceptionally hard on this. I'm, I'm just going to say I'm, I'm very disappointed in Broward Health with respect to this. We've, I believe, under your direction, have gone really above and beyond trying to help my district, my community, Imperial Point, my residents up there that, you know, really miss this park. I've got children, I've got senior citizens up in that community that have lost access to this for several months now. And despite everything that we've done on our side, we don't really seem to be a lot of partnership and collaboration and I'm, I'm very disappointed in that and I just want to be on record with that. So thank you for bringing us that update. I, I hope, I hope we get some progress. We'll share any updates as soon as we get them. Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay, anything further, Mr. City Manager?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, pursuant to Florida Statute, Section 286.0118A, I'm seeking advice on the following matter, Mark Mazzina and Bernard McDonald versus City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, Broward County Circuit, Case Number 21 CV 60168 RKA. During the City Commission Regular Meeting on March 19th, 2024, at approximately 4:30 PM or as soon thereafter as it may be heard, present at the Attorney Client Session will be Mayor Dean J. Trentalis, Vice Mayor Pamela Viesley Pittman, Commissioner John C. Herbst, Commissioner Stephen Glassman, Commissioner Warren Stirman, City Manager Greg Chevry, me and myself, Thomas Sands, Row City Attorney, Deputy City Attorney Dwayne Spence, Outside Counsel Hudson C. Gill of Johnson &amp; Zellweger Law Firm, Outside Counsel Christopher Sterns of also Johnson &amp; Zellweger, Certified Court Reporter from Beale Enton Court Reporting. Estimated length of the session will be approximately 20 minutes. Thank you.
Okay. And does that complete your report? Okay, any further business of the conference meeting? There being none, meetings adjourned, we'll convene in 30 minutes.